Hello, it is now six P M on April first, twenty twenty five. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. The planning board is a seven-member board. Any special permit decision of the board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of the seven-member board is five. If only five members. If only five members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. Any decision on preliminary and definitive plans, approval not required, and proposed zoning amendments, requires a majority vote of the full board. Any decision on scenic road permits requires a majority of the quorum present. Any person giving testimony must state and spell their name and provide their street address for the record. All questions from the public should be directed through the chair. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel Nine. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the S C T V website at W W W dot Sandwich TV dot org tomorrow. According to town bylaw, meetings are audio-recorded. If anyone intends to also record, kindly notify the chair. Taylor with the enterprise. Thank you, Taylor. Alright, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic of Georgia, to the citizens of our nation under God. In this visible, limited, and just as strong.
So our first agenda item is public comment. So I will open up the table here for anyone in the public that would like to speak. Alright, seeing no public comment. We will move forward to the approval, a review and approval of minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Does anybody want to add anything to the minutes or talk about it? Okay, we'll take a motion to approve.
I make a motion to, is it March eighteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
Take a second.
I second that emotion.
Favour? Aye. Aye. Alright, all in favor. Okay, next is submission of new plans. Are there any submissions of new plans? Alright, seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Lookout Ridge Cluster Subdivision for the purpose of requesting a partial release of surety. Just to note that this is not a public hearing. P J Snyder, I believe, is here with us in person, and then Tom Mead will participate via Zoom.
I'm just gonna move here so you can see the board properly, so I apologize, but our cameras are not working in the room, so normally you would see us all on the screen and it would make more sense, but I'm just gonna move so that we can see the board for conversation.
And then, I guess, should I, I guess I can open it up to P J Snyder first, we'll turn it to Sam. I do have an email here from Senior Project Engineer, J C Engineering. I can, I'm happy to read that in before you start. Yeah, okay. So the email from today is from Michael Pimentel, a Senior Project Engineer with J C Engineering. Wrote to Maureen with the Planning Office. Hi, P J, as requested, we surveyed the existing detention basin in Astrid Way and prepared a basin as-built plan, which was attached to the email. The volume of the as-built basin is eight thousand eight hundred and fifty cubic feet, E L one hundred and twenty feet to E L one hundred and twenty-eight feet. The proposed basin is approximately four thousand two hundred cubic feet. The as-built basin is approximately six feet, five inches deep. The proposed basin is only three feet deep. The as-built basin has side slopes at approximately two to one. The proposed basin has three-to-one side slopes. The average side slope of the as-built basin is two to one. Some areas are one point seven to one and some are two point three to one. It appears the as-built basin improvements were substantially constructed in compliance with the Drainage Basin Improvements Plan dated November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, revised December ninth, twenty twenty-one, prepared by the Office of J C Engineering. The as-built width of the basin berm is approximately five point five feet. The proposed width is two feet. Also, it appears the basin side slopes are vegetated with grass and does not contain any eroded areas. If the plan is satisfactory to you, I can finalize it and provide you with signed stamped copies for your submission to the town. Thanks. Turn it over to you.
Yep, so, just a, I guess, a broad story of how this all happened. Was the landscape guy that I hired put rocks on the edge of the existing basin that was there. Sam came and saw it, said I needed to take him out. I took him out, but before that, Sam had me, had the permit stopped with Brendan Brides. So I had to put up forty thousand dollars in a surety bond, which I should have because I'm not really the builder. I'm actually not the developer, I'm a builder. I just bought private lots from Tommy. So I put the money in there and a handshake with Sam and Brendan that I was gonna get it back once I brought it back to where it was. So then I brought it back to where it was with Sam watching the whole time to make sure it was down to the right sand, blah, blah, blah. We had some erosion problems, which then J C Engineering had to come along and come up with that plan that is approved in the as-built you have, I believe you have the as-built, correct?
Yeah, we have one dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Yep, so that just got done recently because Sam asked me to get it last time I came in. And now that it's done to that, as-built, I was hoping to get my money back.
Okay, and then, let me just see, is it a full release of surety?
It's forty thousand dollars.
Okay, so you're looking for a full release because the agenda had a partial release.
It's only partial.
It's only a partial, oh, okay.
So I put forty thousand dollars in there just to keep the project rolling in hopes that I was gonna get it back, and Sam, me, and Brendan Brides agreed to it in his office.
So your forty thousand put in was only a part of the surety that's already in there, so you're just looking for that to be returned?
Correct.
Okay, alright, thanks. Sam, wanna kind of?
Yes, I was able to see the newly stamped submission of the plan, the as-built. And it looks like the, the form of plan that was provided some time ago. It does not show the storm scepter treatment unit, and I would just say that that would be a question for the developers to why it's not showing that. I, I understand that this email was submitted. I do believe it was actually submitted by, it says, P J Snyder. And it says that he copied and pasted it. It does look like an email that was part of a thread from some time ago prior to this, boy, it's hard to say exactly without having the thread in front of me. But I think that would just be a question as to when the, this text actually originated.
Okay, so just.
When it was that these observations were made. But I, I think that it's a step in the right direction to have the, their engineer involved. My recommendation is to have their engineer assess the retention basin as it is, and it, today, or it's presently. Identify what steps might be needed to bring the maintenance into compliance and so that the retention basin then meets the original performance standards as permanent. I can't vouch for it knowing that since the, the last round of maintenance work was completed, it has flooded the road on these three occasions.
Okay, so just to kind of clarify, as you pointed out, that the email that I read was not emailed from Michael Pimentel. It was emailed from P J Snyder, and we don't have the chain, we just have an email that was sent to us. But it does say, here is the email I cut and pasted. So it is a pasted email that we don't really have a background on.
Right, so that would just be a question as to when that text originated.
He sent it over with the as-built the same day the as-built came. I just didn't want to go the whole thing, me going, him going back and forth, that's all.
Okay. So you're saying that the email from Michael Pimentel was from March twenty-fourth?
If I had my phone, I could tell you, but yes. It was either that day or the day after.
Right, and you're saying, what is the plan missing? A storm scepter?
Correct, so the plan shows the two catch basins, the drain manhole, and then a pipe going from the drain manhole to a flare-end section that's within the retention basin. That's where the storm water flows out of the pipe system down to grade at the, with bay lights to the bottom of the retention basin. Between that, there is a storm scepter unit, and that is one of the items that needs to be repaired as identified on our form line. So a question as to, that I have is, why isn't that shown on the as-built?
Thanks.
I was only told to get the as-built over the basin, not the whole street, so I didn't know that. I needed that on there, that's all. Basically, my job was just to get it back the way it was, and that's what I did. And I was supposed to get my money back, and I did that, not.
But there's no agreement to that effect?
There is, we had an agreement, me, him, and Brendan, Sam and Brendan.
But in verbal?
Yep, and then I had it written up through, I believe, Leanne with Tom and I, that said exactly what was gonna happen.
Do we have that?
Yeah, you guys have that package.
It's part of the board's packet. It's a contract between, docu-signed between Mr. Schneider and Mr. Mead that delineates that the forty thousand going back into the surety. Tom Mead is the owner of the surety pod, so it was delineating that when it goes back to Tom Mead, he will give it back to, to P J. So whenever we cut a check for surety, it goes back to the original holder because Tom Mead is the developer. And, and the agreement Mr. Schneider had with, with Mr. Mead was to put it up to release those, the building permits.
Oh, but the agreement didn't outline, well, the forty thousand dollars was being sure, you know, put into surety for it, outlined what would happen when it's released?
It outlined the release project, and it outlined that it was for the retention basin. Didn't go into detail as to whether it was to get it back to performing as it was designed or whether it was to be functional.
Okay, and it, it sounds like there might be an issue maybe with both. Because if the road is flooding, I would question whether or not it's functional, if it's, it's flooded three times.
It needs some maintenance, and we, me, Tom, Mead that's on the Zoom call here, Sam, and who'd I meet with?
Me.
It was you.
Yes, yeah.
Her and John Barry came up with a, a plan of how we're gonna fix it in the springtime, and now it's springtime, so we're gonna fix it. So we're planning on doing that, we just haven't done it yet. Just gonna just scrape out the bottom, make sure it's down to the original grade. It probably has some sediment in it, that's why it's not working properly.
So would the surety not be released once it's?
Well, so the, the deal that we had is as soon as I get it back to the way it is now, I get my money back. It had no bearing on if it worked or if it didn't work, I just put it back the way it was. So if I never did anything to it, like if I never put the rocks in there, it probably wouldn't be working right now anyway.
I'm gonna look for the, what you're talking about, Leanne, to see if it addresses the points it needs.
Leanne, what's the total surety?
I believe it's around seventy-two thousand.
That includes the forty?
Including the forty, yep.
And maybe Mr. Mead could answer this. Why, why did Mr. Mead not put up the additional surety? Why did Mr. Schneider? I'm, I'm a little confused about that.
Yeah, I think probably where that, you guys hear me okay?
Can you hear him okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so I think probably where that was. That P J was working on. So the basin was constructed, like before I ever bought this subdivision. It was constructed, ostensibly was working as it should. And then, and then it was almost like a, as P J mentioned, it was almost like a landscape. They, that instead of just an empty basin, they, they lined it with rocks. And then we got, you know, kind of, not our hands, so to speak, it said, no, that's not the way it was supposed to be constructed. And, you know, a halt was put on, building permits or occupancy permits or whatever it was. P J was, even though I'm the developer of the entire subdivision, P J at that time was the only one working on that road. And so he was kind of stuck, and so this is where the.
But should he have been stuck? Shouldn't you have put up the additional forty thousand?
Well, they were holding on my permits, so it really wasn't his issue at that point. It was my problem, so I had to solve it. And that's what me, Sam, and Brennan came up with, put the forty thousand dollars in to fix it.
I've gotta say, like, that was not, I, my recollection of our discussions is more along the lines of, I brought my concerns to the attention of the building commissioner because that was, that's where the permits were at at that time. And I explained to him that the surety, as I saw it, was insufficient to cover the restoration of the retention basin. And so how they amended that was up to them at that point. So I, that was the extent of my involvement. I had, was not part of an agreement for like an explicit release upon certain grading work or anything like that. And the alterations to the retention basin go beyond just lining it with rock. As their engineer, well, their engineer in training points out, that the side slopes were steepened and now they're non-conforming. The subdivision rules and regulations have a maximum side slope of three to one, so that it's a flatter side slope. It's particularly important.
What's the difference? What the slope is? What's, what's that cause? What problems?
Slope stability in the long term.
Yeah, it's already stable.
Well, if it's, if it's a bylaw, though, I mean, those sets are standard.
He just wants to say something every time he, I'm not gonna argue with him, but it's just one thing after another with him.
Right, so my point is that.
He watched the whole thing get done, he said it was fine.
We'll let him finish what he's saying.
My point is that there were other alterations. It was not simply just lining it with rocks. The shape and the overall, the depth of the retention basin was changed. It, and the grading around it was, was changed as well. That's why the storm scepter was, was buried, was out of sight, and now required repair.
So just to clarify, so you're saying that the regulations require a three-to-one for the slope? Is that right? That's what's required?
That is correct, and that's how that was originally permitted.
And that's how it was originally permitted and constructed? And then the email that, that was exchanged between P J and Michael says the as-built has side slopes of approximately two to one. The proposed basin has three-to-one side slopes, which says, speaks to you. Okay, and, and you, so that's a.
The former as-built from Atlantic Engineering shows it can, previously constructed with three-to-one side slopes.
And there's been flooding issues?
Yes.
I made it actually bigger, so that has.
The size of it?
Yes. So it should work better than it did, not worse than it did.
Do you know, do you know why it flooded? Do you have any, like, explanation?
Probably has sediment at the bottom. It's not coarse sand that it go through. So if we go in there and scrape it, it'll probably work properly.
It'll probably work properly, okay. What is the purpose of the storm scepter?
It removes sediment. So particulates that can accumulate in the bottom of a retention basin can be more difficult to remove. So the storm scepter provides some treatment before the water gets to the retention basin. So it helps extend the life of the retention basin, reduce the amount of maintenance that's needed. However, once it was, the storm scepter was rediscovered, then it was found to be just completely chock-full of sediment.
Okay.
It took some time to, to get that to be cleaned out, but they did eventually clean that out.
Was it because it was? It seems like if the first as-bills had the slope appropriate to the plan, and then now the slope is, has been altered somehow.
Steeper and deeper, correct.
So is it potentially when the basin was made larger and the slope?
Not, not necessarily larger in area-wise. It was made deeper because the, the adjoining land was filled. And so it had a higher elevation that it had to meet.
Okay.
So as the land around it increased in, in elevation, then it required that to be, to tie out to that, it had to be a steeper grade to meet it.
Okay, I'm just trying to think of why that sediment is in there in the amount that it is and ten years from now, that it's gonna continue.
Very little for erosion controls that was put in place.
The neighbors also been there for like eighteen years or something like that. It's been overrun and there's been water running down that road and dirt in it for years. It's supposed to maintain, how many years, how, how, how many times you want that thing maintained? Every other year or something?
It should be inspected on at least an annual basis.
There you go, so it's been, how long has the subdivision been there?
So, which is, which is the responsibility of the developer, which would be a question for Tommy.
Which we did clean it up.
So it is maintenance that was not done. During the course of construction of the building lots, there was inadequate erosion controls that were set out. So there was an enormous amount of sediment flooding off the building blocks. That clogged the storm scepter, and it also led to clogging of the retention basin, that's how I see it.
We've cleaned it all out since then, the storm scepters and all the drainage.
Storm scepter has been cleaned out, that is correct. However, the, the retention basin has not been cleaned out again.
Which we're gonna do this spring. Which we went over in a meeting with Tom, Leanne, me, John Barry.
You, you have an estimate of what all future work will cost to bring it to the point where it, you know, will no longer flood?
No, I do not.
Okay.
And that because of the, the change in the characteristics, that's why I'm not comfortable in making that recommendation. Because the, with the, the physical characteristics that have changed, and I, I was not out there for the entire time that the work was done. I can't speak to everything that happened out there. And that's why I recommend that the applicant work with their engineer. For their engineer to then assess it, provide recommended steps that are needed to bring the retention basin back in compliance so it performs as originally permitted.
Okay, so do you see?
Their engineer should provide that recommendation.
Right, do you see potential that it could exceed the seventy-two thousand surety that is in place now?
It's hard to say.
Okay, and we have had the homeowners in here before us, you know, expressing concern with the flooding and, and the time, you know, that is taken to get it fixed. I'm inclined to follow your guidance, um, and recommendation on that and have it actually, the work be completed, because looking at the, the letter, the agreement that you, I think, were referencing between Thomas Mead and P J Snyder, dated November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and says it will confirm that today you, S C Construction, are posting forty thousand dollar cash with the town of Sandwich as a bond for, quote, "the completion of drainage slash retention basin work on Astrid Way", defined as astrid drainage work. It sounds like the maintenance, if it's, if, the clearing of the basin will probably fix the issue, that sounds like the work isn't completed, and we don't know if it is fixed or it will fix it. And I think more steps need to be taken to confirm that before surety can get released, at least how I see it.
Well, can I just say something? My money should have never went in there, is the bottom line, and it did, for some reason. It's probably against the town laws, I'm sure, but it went in there, which shouldn't happen. So you guys shouldn't have my money, is, is the thing. I should have been stopped on permanent either, but that's what happened, and I had to post it to get the permits rolling so the neighbors wouldn't complain and not move into the houses. And now you guys have my money, that's kind of like, gotta be some sort of law against that.
It sounds like a different issue that was presented before us, though, unfortunately. Right now, that's a different question, so we're not looking to determine whether or not the money should or should not have been put forward as surety. We're looking to determine whether or not it can be released if the work was performed as it was planned, approved, and if it's working. That was before us, so.
Well, I presented a plan to Sam that the engineer presented it, and that as-built says that I did it to the plan.
Okay.
That was approved. Whether it works or not, I'm not too sure. But I did what I was supposed to do, and that was the deal that we had.
Do I have anything?
Yeah, I, I do. I, you know, I think you're in a difficult position, to be honest with you. I think Mr. Mead should be paying you the forty thousand dollars. That's what I think, because I think the developer is responsible for the maintenance of that property. And, you know, you inadvertently got in the middle of this, but I think the moral thing to do in this case would be from Mr. Mead, the developer, to reimburse you for your forty thousand.
I agree with that.
I have a question, please. Stanford, how do you feel about this? It's about to be forty minutes, Stanford will be.
So, again, I, I, well, I, what I was trying to make earlier was the reason this additional forty thousand had to be posted was because modifications were made, something else are already pinned off. The base infrastructure for the lots, which included that retention basin, you know, were, were complete. And P J made some modifications to that. P J and I had an agreement between us that he was going to put it back to the way it was, which he did, and in order to, you know, make it all happen quickly, he put up that money. So I don't need moral, you know, judgments made here in this meeting. The business deal was, P J, you moved some stuff you shouldn't have moved, put it back the way it was, and then you get your forty thousand dollars back from the town. Maintenance and, and drawing in everything else on the street? This is what P J's been trying to avoid and, and trying to make his case that this, this forty thousand dollars should not be mixed in with the rest.
So the slopes aren't the same, though. There's an issue with the slopes. So how, so can you explain, you know, how it would be returned to its original condition that was approved at the three-to-one, if the slopes are steeper now? There's been erosion issues. Sam hasn't been out there to confirm whether or not it is to where it was. We don't have any real detailed evidence from an engineer, aside from a forwarded email, that it is. Actually, the forwarded email doesn't even confirm that, so there's nothing really evidencing what you're saying. And, and if you could kind of direct us a little bit, that might be helpful.
I'm not sure that's accurate. You know, the, the meeting that we had in person in the town hall, we agreed with Sam, the thing to do was to have an engineer go out there. Because Sam said himself, I'm not gonna, I can't go out there and just look at and tell you whether that's right. Have your engineer draw up an as-built, and as long as that as-built says it's put back the way it was supposed to be, then, then P J will have met his obligation. Now, Sam didn't say that, but it reminded me, that's, that's the goal here, is to say that drainage basin was a certain way, it was put back to the way it was. And if it's not, you know, foot for foot, boundary by boundary, the way it was, like, can it handle the type of runoff that it does, so if this, if the steep, if the slope is steeper, you know, but the bottom, the surface area at the bottom is bigger, is that good enough? And I think that's what the March twenty-fourth as-built plan is trying to, you know, pass judgment on, whether or not the, it, it should now, if, whether or not the drainage basin should now be on the way of it before P J makes the modifications.
Do we have a copy of the approved plan anywhere?
I'm sorry, I can't read.
Oh, I'm wondering if we have a copy, because of the as-built, so we can look to see if there's similarities in it, or we just, do you know what I mean, to see if?
The original subdivision?
Yeah, because if this was as-built and if he's, because it sounds like the, I'm having an issue with. He's saying it's back to where it's supposed to be. That was the agreement. I'm hearing a little bit different from the engineering, you know, and I'm, I'm inclined to follow, you know, your instruction. And I don't really have anything connecting those dots to tell me that it was brought back to where it's supposed to be, what the work, you know, what the forty thousand dollars was for. Does it include, you know, the maintenance? Or is that maintenance really kind of secondary to make sure that everything's working? I, you know, like, what's the?
The, the purpose of pointing out the maintenance is really just to show that, that there is other factors that would affect the performance of the, the retention basin. So with the maintenance that hasn't happened, that is something that could definitely be a factor in, in poorer performance of the retention basin. It's degraded capacity infiltrate so far.
So it sounds more like deferred maintenance, more than just regular maintenance? Is that accurate?
Regular maintenance that didn't happen.
Yeah, so it, so it didn't happen, so it was just deferred and put off and, and potentially maybe exacerbated some of the, the issues?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, and that's where the, that's part of the reason that I, I recommend that their engineer provide a, a list of recommendations for what needs to be done, bring this, this basin back so it performs as promised.
Okay, I think I just found the, clean in here, this one from November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. There's one in here for drainage basin improvements. You can pass it down, and I just can look at it in a minute.
It does say in this letter that he wrote me, it does not contain any eroded areas. It's been stable for over a year now, the, around all the slopes.
Sam, I don't know if this is what you're talking about. You probably can't see that far. Can you, there at the bottom here, it says there's erosion control wattle. Is that something similar? Cause it says sediment laden runoff, sediment to be removed if it reaches halfway to the height of the waddle model? Is that kind of similar to what you were talking about from the, um, what this plan is missing, the storm scepter?
No, that, that plan does not show the storm scepter. The storm scepter, uh, was buried at the time by the, uh, the filling between the street and the retention basin.
Okay.
Uh, and so it was, had been lost, uh, like just generally lost, lost track of.
And what was showing that on here do on the plan?
Well, not showing it and then having, uh, accepting an as-built, um, which has been, becomes a plan of record. Omit's that, that important piece of the drainage system. And gives the impression that it doesn't exist and gives, and also then, uh, reinforces an inaccurate depiction of the piping system.
Just to be clear, we're, we're not proposing this as the plan of record for the subdivision.
It's submitted as an as-built stamped by his engineer.
The money specific to the, to the, uh, repair of the basin.
That storm scepter is on the original plan, that original as-built.
So let me, let me just ask you a question PJ. How difficult and how long would it take if for the as-built plan to be updated with the storm, storm scepter shown on there? Getting, um, some documentation, more formal documentation from your engineer to provide to Sam other than a forwarded email? And cleaning it out. So say those three items, is that something, cause it's spring?
It's pretty easy.
It's pretty easy. So, so.
You guys already have the storm scepter on and as-built somewhere.
Okay.
From the original, that, I didn't touch that at all. I only touched the little bowl that holds the water. That's all I touched.
I think they're looking for.
All the pipes, everything else are exactly how it was set up originally.
Yeah, I think probably an as-built that's current in, in time with all of that on there is, is, is something that it sounds like what is being looked for. So if it doesn't take, you know, an insurmountable amount of effort and time to do those items and if that would satisfy engineering, you know, does that sound like that would be satisfactory, those three items?
It's definitely a step in the right direction, yeah.
Okay, so then perhaps those three items are completed, come back before us and we can revisit it. I mean, I don't know how, well, let every, all the other board members opine on the same, but I mean, it doesn't sound like that might be overly arduous.
No, just more money, that's all.
Well, it's gonna be done anyways, right?
What, what I'm saying is the storm scepter is already on and as-built that you guys already have.
Yeah.
From the original, I didn't touch any of that. None of the piping, none of the drainage, nothing got touched.
But if this isn't the as-built per Tom Mead that's gonna be submitted for final approval, one has to be done anyways. So why not put the scepter on it and have it be accurate?
Sure.
So there's no-
I'm just saying though, that it, I didn't touch any of that stuff. So that's like saying, should I have as-built the whole neighborhood? Like, why would I do that?
Well, cause we're not suggesting that.
I know that, but it's like, like it's already there. You already have it. You should already have that paperwork, is what I'm saying to you. That storm scepter is on there.
What plan, what, what date is that storm scepter?
Whenever the original subdivision got done.
So as-built, when they're done are as-built and they go out and they look at them, right? So the as-built where the storm scepter was on there, if there's been a lot of issues in between-
Nothing changed with it. It's in the same as X-Bot.
Well, my opinion is not changing on that front.
I'm just telling you that's where it is though.
I, I would just-
There's no way I moved it.
I would just point out that the, uh, the developer's contractor, um, opened it, the, uh, the storm scepter. And it was so full of, of sediment and beyond, uh, its point of regular maintenance that their, their contractor ended up, uh, damaging some of the components in there. Alright, it's part of their cleanout. Those need to be corrected and repaired. And the frame and cover need to be brought to grade. Cause as it was originally built, the grade where the storm scepter is was approximately a foot lower than it is now. So now, and that's one of the reasons it was lost. It was covered over, um, it's part of the filling operation that changed the characteristics of the retention basin. And, uh, it was not clear as to where it was. So I can understand why their engineer didn't pick it up in their as-built survey.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful. Do you, anybody else wanna?
I understand your frustration, um, you know, but I guess I'm struggling with who is gonna take responsibility and that. Doesn't sound like it's you because you're not the developer of the subdivision, but this is problematic. So I wanna know, Mr. Mead, are you taking responsibility for making the drainage basin?
Yes, yeah, there's a, there's a, we had a, I had a long meeting over the winter. With PJ and John and I were there. There's an email trail back and forth with a list, very specific list of what needs to be addressed. I provided back to Sam very detailed comments on each line item. Who would be responsible, at what point we would address it and how we would address it. So yeah, that's all, um, there's the rest of this money that, um, you know, that needs to be released and or work that needs to be completed. I'm not saying that we're not gonna do that and, and that's the very good meeting that we had, you know, a few months ago. So that all can be done, that all will be done. One, one of the things we do need to do is like, just identify just exactly what it is and how far it'll go. But I think that's, you know, that's the email back and forth between Sam and I with the, a very specific list, apprehensive list of everything he's looking for.
And how much on the list has been completed?
We're not shying away from that. I think that, you know, PJ's frustration is this forty was never supposed to be mixed in with that. And he feels like he did what he was supposed to do for his part of it to get that, that chunk of the money, uh, you know, pleased.
But I know, I, I think there's a bit of a conflating of issues of whether or not it was PJ's responsibility or whose responsibility it was. It was surety needed to be made and it was, and now we're looking at what needs to be done. I think all of that is, is kind of separate, you know, maybe between the two of you or handled outside. And again, it, it makes sense, like your frustration, you want your money back. We get that. But there's issues still that are existing and if the plan can be updated with the scepter, if the maintenance can be done. And the other item was, oh, the engineer, have the engineer, you know, on a formal letter or however the engineering, our engineering department wants it. Give their opinion. Um, I think that that's a really good start. And then we can at least on, you know, from the planning board's perspective, do our job to make sure that the, the work and the sureties are where they need to be.
Good.
So that's, I think that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I, I think that makes sense. I, I think I did make my point. Um, I, I don't, I, I feel like PJ is in the middle of something that really is the developer's responsibility. And I think it's unfortunate that that can't be made right between the two of them, but, um, we don't have any control over that. So I think your plan is very good. I think it's our responsibility to make sure that, that the town is covered with this. That the town doesn't need to go back later and expend the money. Because we've, you know, given the surety back and now it's not functional.
So I just wanna say, repeat two things that Sam said and those seem to be of key importance. Please correct me if I misspeak, but that the developer of the property needs to work with their engineer to assess the retention basin as it is presently and identify the steps needed to bring the basin into compliance and then act on those steps. Okay, so I feel like until that happens, we're really at an impasse. Because what we're being sort of asked to weigh in on now are, um, some side agreements. Cause you're, you, you'll agree with me that your agreement is with Mr. Mead and not with the town.
No, my group was with the town.
Your agreement, your signed agreement is with Mr. Mead.
Correct. Our agreement was with Sam and Brendan Breds.
That's not in our purview.
Well, I was, I only had a day to do it while they were gonna hold up my permit, so I kinda had to do it the same day.
Yeah, do you understand how we can say without written materials that there could offend this communications? Perhaps you, a lot of what was being said meant one thing and it didn't really mean that. And that's why it's important to have written documentation. But I just feel like what we have available to us, the documentation that we have available to us. A lot of your frustration seems to be more of accounting, um, and not necessarily related to the work.
Okay, so it sounds like we're, we're pretty much in, you know, unanimy that get those items completed and then come back before us and if engineer is happy, I think engineering is happy. I think that'll be positive.
Sounds good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jennifer, the board should take action. Do you wanna continue the meeting? Do you wanna deny and, and come back? I think you probably need some time, right? Like, so if we deny and then you come back, it might give you the time that you need to do. How quickly do you think you would be able to get all these items together?
Maybe a month.
A month. How can we continue out that long? What would you prefer? Deny and then come back or us to continue for a month?
I don't know the difference. What's the difference?
You would just have to resubmit a request again. The other, the other thought is that maybe next time you come back, it could be for a partial release of surety. Um, because, uh, Mr. Mead has delineated all of the items that me and Sam went through with him. And regarding when, you know, it would take place, we're gonna do a site visit. So there's potential that the next time it comes back, it could be, you know, it could be good news and that all the work's been completed and this is a, a full release of surety instead of just a partial. So maybe if we denied, you could maybe be back here in, in a month to, to two months with that.
Sure, I think we probably might need a little bit more time. What do you think, Tom? Get all the work done?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, that part of it's really your call, PJ, right? Like if you wanna reserve for in thirty days, you can get your three things done and maybe you get your forty.
I can get my three things done for sure.
You know, me and you are on the same page, like we wanna get it, we all wanna be done with this.
Right.
So we're, we're gonna try and, you know, get out there, get John out there, get you out there, you know, to get it done. But just know if you pull yours off the table, we have to resubmit a little bit of your own on the ice that we get it all done.
Right.
Yeah, maybe you just come back for yours after your points are met.
Sure.
Which even if they deny, you can do it anytime, once you're ready.
Okay, so just do the work then reapply for?
Yeah, just send, just send an email back to us again saying you're ready to, to go forward.
So then we'll, we'll deny and then, um, do I need to take a motion or?
Uh, yeah, a motion second vote, yeah.
Take a motion to deny, um, the release of surety. Let me just pull up the wording. Oh, it is, I'm sorry. Release of surety right here, this one. Okay, I make a motion to deny the release of surety for Lookout Ridge Cluster Subdivision.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, anyone oppose abstain? Okay.
Alright.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, man. Thanks, yeah. Okay, uh, next is new business, um, it is one twenty-one, one twenty-two, one thirty-nine, one forty, one, oh, should actually, you know what? I should, yeah, I can do that. One forty, one forty-four, one fifty-one, one sixty, one seventy-one and one seventy-seven Old County Road. Two Talbot's Point Road and Two Village Road, scenic road permit. Town of Sandwich for the purpose of removing seventeen trees, which are a mix of species located within the town road layout. I'll read the, um, public hearing notice, uh, for the Town of Sandwich Planning Board. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Fifteen C, the Scenic Road Act. The Sandwich Planning Board and the Sandwich Tree Warden will hold a joint public hearing on a request for the removal of seventeen trees, which are a mix of species located within the town road layout. One twenty-one Old County Road, one twenty-three Old County Road, one thirty-nine Old County Road, one forty Old County Road, one forty-four Old County Road, one fifty-one Old County Road, one sixty Old County Road, one seventy-one Old County Road, one seventy-seven Old County Road, Two Talbot's Point Road and Two Village Drive. The trees to be removed will be marked for public view. The Town of Sandwich, um, is the applicant and property owner. The public hearing will be held on April first, twenty twenty-five at the Sand Hill School Community Center, sixteen Dewey Ave, Sandwich, Mass at six P M. The public record information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office. Jennifer Reising, Chair, Sandwich Planning Board, publication Sandwich Enterprise on March fourteenth, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I second that, Mark.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I guess we'll just turn it right over to the tree warden to tell us about the trees.
Thank you, Jennifer. So, uh, we reviewed this, I reviewed this project with, uh, Jordan Young from EverSource and, uh, we drove from, uh, Old County, or it starts on six A to where it splits with Chase Road, um, and inspected the trees for, um, potential risk trees that could possibly strike the lines and cause a, um, causing a hazard to people in the area. And we identified seventeen trees there. The criteria we use to identify these is their ability to hit the lines, whether it's due to lean, structural defects, um, rot, decay, several other factors, uh, could be issues of concern for these trees. And we believe removing these will, um, make it less likely for failure to occur where, um, it will cause a, a tree or limb to hit the lines and cause an outage or a dangerous situation for residents in the area.
Thank you. Does anybody wanna speak? Oh, great. We'll take turns and if you can come up, just say your name and your address, please.
I'll be brief. Good evening. Members, uh, my name is Chase Tario. I live on Village Drive, right off of Old County. My two cents, I totally understand the concern. I, I would just say that, uh, like every other road in Sandwich, there's trees that could hit the power lines and this road is no different with the exception that it's scenic and it's, uh, part of the appeal of the road and the reason I live in the neighborhood I do is because it's in a natural state and we like it that way. And the road's a scenic road and I think everybody likes it that way. I guess I would argue if, through the chair, if there's a risk, I mean, certainly I'm sure there's some pruning or I'm sure EverSource has some alternative options to consider other than clearing seventeen trees off a scenic road that are hundred-plus-year-old trees that people like and wanna keep. So please keep the trees. Thank you.
What are your thoughts on pruning as opposed to taking them down?
I'm assuming there will be pruning done as well as the removals. The trees that we identified, um, most of them we, if we did prune the trees that are listed on here, they would still be a, they still have potential to hit the wires and it wouldn't reduce the risk by pruning these ones. As much I would say, um, Jordan can speak a little bit more to that. That would be my assessment of that. We didn't, you know, I'm not going down the road trying to take down as many trees as possible just because they have the ability to hit the lines. They, they have the ability to hit the lines and they ha, and, um, they have issues of concern that make it, um, more likely to happen as well.
Such as?
We could go through the list, but a lot of them have open wounds where you can see rot and decay. Some of them are in decline, so further pruning to them would just increase the inevitable of them failing. Um, they're bound to fail eventually, so putting further pruning into them would just be a waste of money to take them down, down the road. Can't say exactly how long that would be. Some of them are almost curled around the base or they're either missing bark or they have other roots constricting the base of the tree. Causing the, uh, diminished flow of water industry and something down in the vascular system of the tree. There are also, um, many, uh, many dead trees along the road there too that we identified.
I wish you're not part of the seventeen, the seventeen ones.
No, we did include, there is one that's mostly dead. There's a, um, at one thirty-nine, I believe. There's a, um, a black cherry that's mostly dead. It has a, it has a few, um, live shoots on it, but I imagine it would, will not survive the year, um, with this current condition. And then there is one, uh, large, um, white pine that's completely dead.
So out of the seventeen, one is that mostly dead black cherry and then a one completely dead. So really you're looking more towards fifteen. So out of the seventeen, one is that mostly dead black cherry and then one completely dead, so really you're looking more towards fifteen living, potentially damaged.
There are three more as well that are, they're alive, but they're, they've broken storms and they're, um, the, the remaining spars of the tree, which are just a, a pole of a tree, maybe thirty to twenty feet tall, has suckered out from that point. Um, and they're just, they're just hanging on. They're eventually just going to be dead spars on the side of the road that could otherwise fall and hit the wires or just end up in the road.
Alright, so say there's like fifteen trees and how long of a distance would you say that this is? Is it like a, I didn't, I didn't drive it, between one twenty-one and one seventy-one, is it like, you know, a half a mile? Are we talking? Estimate?
I'd guess a half a mile, yeah.
A half?
And this is a, it's a heavily wooded area, so there's hundreds of trees along the road there.
Are they pretty spread out or like a lot of the trees clumped?
They're in, let's see, there's one larger clump from, from, uh, one forty-nine, Two Talbot's Point, to one fifty-one, and then on the other side where the large white pine is, uh, which is one sixty. There's six or seven trees in that area and then the, the rest of the locations, there's two and three, three trees in each address listed there.
So around one sixty is probably where the bulk of the trees are going to be concentrated?
Yeah, one, one fifty-one and, uh, Two Talbot's Point and, uh, one forty-nine in between there.
It's exactly a half a mile.
It is, okay. Do you think there's any of them that could potentially, I know you're, you're good at what you do and you tend to be, you know, conservative from what I've gathered as far as taking down trees that you don't have to. Could you offer us assurance that the trees that were selected, there's really no option, um, to keep them otherwise, that any kind of, were any on the fence that maybe, well?
Sure, there's always ones that are on the fence. I can't give you assurance with, with trees, they're living things and I can't, I can't say for certain with, with anything. It could, it could look like it's going to go tomorrow and halfway up and hang on a wire, but I can't give you assurance with a living thing that it's gonna be good for the next fifteen years or five years or not. With our, with our expertise and the best knowledge we have, we, we can say that, you know, these trees, while we went down the road, were the ones that, um, struck us most as the, um, best candidates to remove, to keep the power on and keep people safe.
If I could through the chair. Were the trees surveyed during the growing season or in the winter without any foliage?
So, we've been down there a lot and I've seen them both with foliage and without foliage. It's easier to, believe it or not, it's easier to pick this stuff out when there's no foliage on the tree and make a decision whether or not they're in good health or not, because you can see the structure more of the tree and what's going on with that, so.
My only counter would be, and I appreciate EverSource's desire for reliable power. God bless them. Those seventeen trees aren't gonna, if we have a significant catastrophic event, those trees being there or not being there are gonna have no difference on, let's get to it with trees.
So, and the trees, so, uh, do you have, are they marked so you know what trees?
Yeah, they're posted, uh, they're right at the end of the neighborhood. Um, like that white pine in particular, totally with you. It is dead as a doornail. Like absolutely dead, no question. But if we scroll to it, I think the power lines are on the other side of the road. And like, it is dead, but in all fairness, like, I don't know, it's habitat, it's, it's part of the natural landscape of the road, so I, I don't, uh, I think it's one more back. I don't, there's a, there's another shot. Maybe one more. I saw it earlier. Probably, no, there is a, yeah, like, I'm with you. I guess, uh, the, my only other argument from a technical standpoint, uh, uh, how far does the roadway extend? Ten feet from edge of pavement, I think, roughly? Something like that?
In that area, I'll see if I have the plan for that one, that my engineer can pull up, but I believe there, it was twenty-two feet from the edge of the pavement.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it's. My point being, uh, again, totally appreciate EverSource's concern for power supply, but that road is very natural on purpose and, uh, I don't know, I've lived here for my whole life. There's been trees that have looked half-dead since I was five years old that are still there. So I just would respectfully, again, I'll leave it as, respectfully request that we leave it in its natural condition and if, when there's a power outage, I'm sure EverSource would happily, uh, restore power like they always do, so. Thanks.
You can sit next to him and then just speak whenever. Just take turns.
Two Rogers, one ninety-seven Main Street, Sandwich Tree Landscape. Seventeen trees is a lot of trees, but we, uh, totally respect James's opinion. He's been a pleasure to work with. My, and, and we also have a certified arborist, uh, on our Tree Landscape Committee, uh, who basically agrees with James about which trees should be taken down. My big question is, will these be replaced? I, I believe you have a formula. It's a strange formula, something like one and a half trees for every tree that's taken down. While the seventeen trees are taken down, that pretty much amounts to twenty-five trees that would have to be replaced. I don't know if we have the, the means to do that.
So I think the one and a half times, that's just a custom that the planning board has followed. It's not written in any regulations or anything. And that's usually what we do for homeowners, when the homeowners are an applicant. When it's a town, it's a little bit different. But we can definitely, you know, consider it and I think it's a good suggestion.
I, I would think it would at least be a, a tree for a tree. Maybe the one and a half is a little too strange, but, uh, at least, for every tree taken down, there should be one that's replaced. Thank you.
Fred Pryor, Six Holt Road, East Sandwich.
From Six what Road?
Holt Road, just off Old County. Has any consideration been given to the way people fly on that road since it was modified? And especially the trees at about one twenty-one and one twenty-three? If those trees come down, the people are going to drive even faster because it's going to look a lot wider than it, it already is. I appreciate the electric company's thoughts on it, but, uh, you know, pulling out of Holt Road, the people, it's, you know, scary sometimes the way that people drive on there. The speed limit should be thirty, but by state rules, it's actually fifty. They go faster than that. And, uh, those three locust trees, I think it's one twenty-one, they really define the, the edge of, you know, how big this road is. And if they come down out of there, it's going to be, you know, like driving on the midcape.
What would the feasibility be, I don't know what the coffers look like, to replace at least the living trees? Like say if you were to take fifteen living ones down, is there, if we did one for one, is that something that's feasible?
It's, uh, yes, um, not in the locations exactly where all of them are, because some of them are in densely wooded areas and planting a, a tree from a nursery in a densely wooded area gives it a very little shot of making it to maturity. With competition from other trees and shade, which we've talked about before here, so. It has been offered to, um, homeowners that I've talked to there where the trees are in front of their properties, um, on the town layout, that we could, um, put in replacement trees there. The, the other alternative would just be to, as we usually do, take into account that we're removing this tree, this many trees and plant them elsewhere. Replant elsewhere.
In the same vicinity, isn't that then like in twenty years or so, gonna just create the same problem again? And they'll need to be taken down again?
So, we'll try and, um, we're going to try and pick species that are better suited around the wires there, so there are some that are growing directly underneath or next to the wires. In those locations, if a homeowner wanted to replant there, we'd pick a smaller to medium-sized tree to use in that, in that instance. Some of them are across the street from the wires and, you know, there's, there's plenty of str- trees that are across the street and in good health and good condition and not at risk and, um, move all those trees, but, um, so if it's across the street, I'd be fine with planting another large mature shade tree because it's, I mean, it could take fifty, a hundred years for it to get to a point where it strikes the lines again. And we still have a nice tree in the meantime, providing all the benefits the trees do, so.
And the percentage, um, of the trees that you're cutting down, um, in coordination with the, the overall number of trees along that street, what percentage of the trees on that road would you estimate? That the seventeen is?
I don't know exactly, but I'd say it's less than five percent.
Okay, so it's not really going to make a big visual impact, really?
I guess there's, there's over a thousand trees on that street.
So minimal visual impact?
Yeah, I mean, you'll, you'll notice especially with these ones that we're discussing with right now because they're, they're right at the front of someone's property. And they're, they're large locusts and they, they do, as you've said, frame the edge of the road there. So those will be, there are some that will definitely be noticed. There are some that are more hidden in the wood line and if you don't look up often, you probably wouldn't notice, but, you know, if, you know, if you're aware of the environment, like many of the people here are who care about trees, that they will probably notice them, but there's, you know, there's a lot of wood, it's a wooded area there, so there will be regrowth, um, natural and, you know, we can reintroduce some trees as well.
So like those three trees, for example?
Yes.
If those were to come down, that's a pretty substantial visual difference, like significant.
Yes.
Is there anything wrong with those trees?
Yeah, those three trees, um, all have major defects with, with them. All of them are in decline. They're just very old black locust trees. Um, they drop dead wood annually. They, you can look at the canopies, you can, they all have breaks in them. Um, and you could say that that's just, um, that's just dead wood. It's not going to jump across the street and hit the wires, but at the base of, um, two of these, there's large areas of, uh, open wounds, maybe seven to ten feet of missing bark. And you can see, um, rotten wood inside, um, so there's decay sitting in there and there's, it's hoping for more to, to come in and increase faster. Um, the farthest one, right where you can see the car going by in that picture, actually has, uh, a fungal conch maybe thirty feet up on the main trunk there, so that's, means that there's decay fungi feeding on the, on the hardwood of that tree and higher up in the canopy, so I'd say that's at least a moderate risk, not even just to hit the wires, but possibly cause an accident in the road.
So in that location?
Yes.
Could trees be planted in those same spots?
Um, yes, so we have talked to that homeowner there and she's, she is, um, has asked for replanting in that area, so, yes.
Okay, and what kind of trees, like same kind?
Well, no, we wouldn't plant black locust there, um, they're actually on the invasive species list, so we can do somewhat alike line, but where it's in front of, um, someone's house there, I do like to give them a choice of what trees they'd like to put. Um, she did have some preference. I don't remember what it was off the top of my head.
And have you talked, I'm assuming you have, but have you spoken with other homeowners that have expressed kind of, or, you know, corresponded similarly?
There was, there's one other homeowner that did want to plant something. I think he wanted to plant something on his own, but with that, if he wanted to, uh, but, uh, yes.
Did you receive anybody that was upset about the tree or didn't want, one of the trees cut down? Because I know like if I had a tree that was damaged in my front yard and I had the opportunity to plant a new healthy one, I mean, I, it might not be terrible, I might not be that upset. Did anybody, was anybody particularly disturbed or upset with the idea of cutting a tree near their property?
Uh, no, not that I encountered.
Okay. Can I ask, um, you a question, um, Chase?
Sure.
And they can hear him now with the new sound system, so he doesn't have to come up anymore?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. What are your thoughts on the trees being replaced, where they can be replaced, kind of what we've been talking about?
I think it's a step in the right direction. Uh, it feels like it's, um, you, you're not going to, you're definitely changing the character of the, of the road. I think it's a step in the right direction as a compromise. Sure, but, uh, you know, again, I, to me, the biggest thing I find is in that, that full length of that road is, and to be honest, there's more than those seventeen trees that are old and funky and they've always been that way and um, I guess that's my personal feeling is they may be decaying and have tree limb drop, just like any other tree, every other winter in every person's yard that's here, right? But, I don't know, it's part of the character of the road. I, I don't view it as a problem personally. Uh, I guess I look at it as that's what, that's what defines the road. Uh, but yeah, as far as replanting, I think that is, I think that would be a fair minimum expectation. Yeah, it would be a shame to go without some type of replacement. Personally.
So I, I definitely admire your passion for the, the character of the road and the, the habitat that it provides and that you really appreciate the, the view on the road there and I do too. It's a very nice road to drive down. It, it would be a shame if there was, you know, far more trees in this coming down. It didn't look like it did. Unfortunately, it's, we are also part of that habitat and we have to consider, you know, this is an urban forest as well as it is, you know, a, a home for animals and trees and everything else in the area and they're not the same year to year. They, they change year to year, they grow, they age, they, they die. Just like we do and we can, you know, we can wait until a tree is completely dead to remove it and make things si- and then make things safe, but that opens up a risk to everybody passing by to that tree, walking on the road, um, the people that have to remove that tree as well. And the, the more, um, the level of risk raises as, you know, trees age and they die back and, um, more limbs become less structurally sent and it makes them harder to remove and it makes them more likely to fail. So it's a tough thing to do sometimes is to make a decision to remove a tree that, yes, it's partially healthy, but is it going to be partially healthy for the next ten years? I don't know, could it cause an accident, cause a significant or severe damage or loss of life? It's hard to say, you know, it's unlikely, but can happen and it's better to make these decisions sooner than later in most cases.
Two questions.
Yeah.
One, are, is this pruning, pruning, tree cutting, um, recommendations going to be coming before us in half-mile increments? Like is this just one section that's been addressed and then is there, like, there's down Old County Road, you know, further down, is there, is it kind of a continuous project? Are we just doing like a section at a time? Is there a plan for that?
I don't know. I'll talk to Jordan from EverSource about that and see what his plans are going forward. This is something that, uh, we've both talked about, um, maybe for over a year now to try and plan and, um, make a plan to go down this portion of road and, um, remove some trees to make things safer and keep power on, so.
I'd like to know if there is a, a larger plan.
That's a fair question, yeah.
It is a beautiful road.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a, one of, probably one of the prettiest roads in town. So I, I really want to know what the big picture plan is, because if we're talking about doing this this year and next year, coming back to us to take
Because if we're talking about doing this this year and next year coming back to us to take down fifteen more, I'd really have a lot of concerns about that.
Absolutely.
If you, yeah, if you could, just because you're from EverSource, I think it would be nice to kind of have you in front of us.
Jordan Young, EverSource Arborist, um so as far as a plan, no, there is no current plan to come at you guys next year again. Um, we are constantly patrolling our circuits, looking at the trees in the area, health changes, you know, conditions change. Um, so I'm not saying, never ask for another tree on Old County Road, um I've I feel like when me and James did go down the road. We did kinda go with a fine tooth comb, you know, it is a heavily wooded area. Yes, seventeen trees is a lot, but in the scope of things on that road, I. I didn't get everything I was looking for either, you know, um, you know, our our clearance goal is at least ten feet to the side. Down Old County Road, we are well within that, you know, not reaching our our clearance goals, um. So, you know, I I I feel we were conservative in the trees that that we picked, you know. I have a job, my job is to keep the trees from hitting the power lines, you know, that is my obligation and the obligation of EverSource. Have reliable power, different points of view, you know, so um.
You said ten feet from the sides or ten feet from the power line?
Ten feet from the outside pha- phases, ten, ten, fifteen feet above, i- is our clearance goal.
Okay.
Around the the wire zone.
So are you saying ten feet from each side of the road?
No, no, from the from the phases, in the air, on the three phase wire.
So like that for example?
That is our goal, you know, we are not anywhere near our goal, you know, and and we have roads like that all over the cake, that we we don't get that, you know, in in. The utility arborist perfect world, that is what we want, you know, we know we're not gonna get that on Old County, you know, that's just. Part of being out here, you know, I'm kidding, so.
You could speak to actually this picture that's up right here, because those trees are seem to be more than ten feet away from.
So across the road, and like James said, they do have some some major defects, you know, some fungal bodies growing on them and stuff, black locust. Not a great tree, non-native, um we take lots of outages from shallow rooting, get 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 lots of uproots from them. Um, so yeah, you know, we we definitely do take trees across the street, you know, if a tree is. Sixty feet tall and it's forty feet from the wires, uproots, it, you know, will absolutely hit the wires if it falls that direction, um.
I'm just looking at a picture of the same roadway from last summer. Um, where the trees are, look healthy, they're not on our list, but they're green, um they have leaves. And I do, I am very sympathetic, I think it was Mr. Pryor, was it? Um, I'm Mr. Terrio, I'm also from Sandwich, um born and raised, graduated from Sandwich High School.
Been there as long as you can remember, right?
This road used to um both impress me and scare me when I was driving because people fly down this road. But it was probably one of the most beautiful tree canopies that I've seen, uh and we're, I think we're lucky to have it, um so I think. I agree that um this does act as a little bit of a speed restrictor, how close those trees are to the road, it does. Keep some people from maybe going seventy miles an hour and maybe they only go fifty, um. And I'm just wondering, you know, as you were going through, maybe this might be a better question for you, but as you're going through and evaluating these. If there are trees that maybe could, we could hold off and and look at them at another time?
Sure, I mean, you know, my job is to present this stuff to you guys and, you know. Share the risk with you and you you're making decisions to work with us, it's, you know. I'm not saying these trees are going to fail next year and fall across the street and hit the wires, I'm saying they do have the potential to do that and they are. Some of the older and higher risk trees on the road, they have more um issues of concern than some of the other ones, um. And yes, they they do have healthy canopies, but that doesn't mean they're structurally sound.
If those three trees in particular were not being requested to be cut down through, um what was your first name?
Jordan.
Jordan, with Jordan in you when you discussed it, would you still recommend they be taken down due to their condition? Or is the recommendation really being um kind of because of the EverSource component?
No, I'd I'd recommend those trees come down, either way.
You would?
Yes, um. There's not much going on with those trees anymore, they're. The canopies of those trees are mostly just sticks with succour incoming on them, they're just trying to hold on to whatever little bit of life they have left, they're. They're not putting on more growth, they're in a state of decline at this point. Getting bigger, they're just, they're holding on, maintaining what they can and. Trying to put out more seed for the next year, they're not gonna get any bigger, they're not gonna. Remarkably making uh comeback and be healthy again, you know, it's. Grow more structural wood at this point.
How about the one at one forty, Old County Road, that's across the street also, is that the condition of that? Is that the one across the street that's being proposed, being cut?
Yes, so that one's um a second more maple and um. And the homeowner actually asked me about that uh two years ago now and. I told I told him, oh, no, I don't know if we're gonna take that one down, it's it had a healthy canopy at that point, but I looked at it last um. Last summer and it was in a pretty good state of decline, um didn't have much foliage left on the canopy in mid-July. And I looked down at the base uh this past week, it's actually curled almost all the way around on the stem, so there's only. S- like six inches of bark cambium at the base of that tree left, so the rest of it's just. Open wound down there, so that's open for, again, disease and decay to get into at the base and you can't see from that picture of course, but. Um, and it's also moving uh less water nutrients up and down, as as I talked about, which. Makes it's less likely to survive, it's it's, yeah.
Um, can I ask you about?
Had that tree up and on the town property, the homeowner was gonna take it down himself.
Okay.
And uh, you know, he says it it is almost dead, he's looking forward to replacing it with something else.
How about the one sixty, Old County Road, Two Village Drive, White Pine?
Yeah, it's a, it's a. That's a large dead uh multi-stem white pine, it's probably, I don't know, ninety, a hundred feet tall, um.
That one is dead in the summer. It has no, let's see, one sixty is it? Yeah, this is what it looked like last summer.
Okay, yeah, that too.
So from the pictures, it looks like, just taking them one by one, I guess. Um, those three we talked about at one twenty-one, one twenty-three, Old County Road, those three black locusts, that one. You said that even if there was no EverSource involvement, you would still recommend them being taken down due to the condition of them and the homeowner seems to be. Okay with that. Are you going to plant, I know you said you can't obviously plant where you're in the exact same spot when you're removing them, but would it be? As close to the road as those are?
Um, if it would be as close to the road, I might go a little bit further back, um even if they were off land a little bit. Twenty feet off of where the the road ends and do a setback planting on their property if they were to agree to that and um. But it could be, you know, and you know, I'd be fine with just going to the the right or the left of where the stumps would of those would be. Planting anywhere in there, so the suitable species, of course.
I mean, looking at the pictures, it doesn't look like. Anything, and the ones that are, they're either touching the lines and the ones across the street are like leaning black locusts. Or trees that are compromised is what it looks like, I'm not seeing anything jumping out at me with the pictures. Um, I completely understand what you're saying and I I agree, um it's just, it's a tough. Tough call, you know, trying to kind of thread that needle, um it kind of sounds like just working with the homeowners and. Replacing trees to try to keep the beautification in the natural state of the road. It's probably the really the best compromise that can be had, I'm thinking. Other thoughts?
So, am I understanding correctly, you're saying then that you did survey the entire street and these are the only seventeen trees? On the whole length of the street that you're looking at?
Yes, I mean, I I looked at a lot of other trees there, but uh these were the ones where I was like, yeah, you know, these are. The top of my list, you know, cause I know, uh you know, I do go to other towns with, you know, a hundred tree removals. I totally understand, we're not gonna do that on Old County Road, I don't wanna do that there, you know, I'm I'm fine with just doing the seventeen. Um, but yeah, these were kind of the top of my list that I wanted to get out of there.
Are there any of the seventeen that could possibly just be pruned and have somewhat of the same effect? Without taking it down completely?
That's, you know.
Healthier ones, obviously.
Yeah, it would have to be, you know, a lot of these weren't the healthiest of trees, you know, as James said, you start pruning. Trees that are already in decline, you're you're just kinda kinda, it, you know, keep that ball rolling and and, you know, make them decline faster. Um, you know, we, so we come through and we prune, we, you know, the, we have an obligation with the DPU. To prune each circuit every five years on a cyclical basis, so we do bar pruning, you know, um but we also have this a removal program as well. Where, you know, if you have a stem of a tree, two feet from the wires, there's no branches to prune, you can't prune that tree, you know, um. So these these ones are, you know, we've been through there and pruned, these are ones that, you know, as an arborist, I feel should be removed.
Can we go through the pictures just real quick, like from the top and just make sure we've touched on them and see if there's any questions, so those three. It sounds like are compromised anyways, um. So if anybody has any questions about the pictures, chime in, but I think it would probably be helpful just to kind of zip through each one real quick. That one, I mean, it's, there's a lot of them that are touching the power lines and that's just, is it just that one, the black cherry? Oh, and sycamore maple, so is it the two?
Mm-hmm, there's two right there.
So why those two and not the ones behind it? Cause the other ones behind it are equally as close.
So you can see the top of that black cherry, it's got the thick limbs at the top, so that's, those are dead limbs up there, you know, those are not. You know, limbs that are 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 flowering and stuff, you know, that are pu- putting putting out leaves in the in the growing season, you know.
Okay, the one in the front, the closest.
Correct, correct.
What about the one behind it? That looks relatively healthy.
So that one is relatively healthy, um it does have some structural defects, as you can see, it does have an awkward bend in the stem. It looks like at some point it it probably had a a failed top and an offshoot started. And that is now the new canopy of that tree, um that happened however many years ago and that's just a. It's a more awkward and weaker union there, it's a, it's a waterspout that came off of what was a broken top a few years ago. And created a much larger tree, um in addition to that, the about, I don't know, fifteen feet up in that tree, there. There's a, there's a wound from where an old pruning cut was made and there's there's a hollow in there, you can see decay in the in there. Um, it's a maybe a three inch open wound, but you can see decay in the in the center of the tree there.
If the front one was removed and the the back one cut back fairly substantially, would it allow it more room for growth? New growth because it's got open space, is it salvageable with extreme pruning? Or, and does the homeowner have any um feeling on the matter?
Um, that homeowner was on board for both of those, uh against sycamore maple is also a um invasive species there. Um, it potentially it could be salvageable, the, it's hard to tell from the angle of the picture, but the the. The far from the way we're looking at it, the far right top of that um sycamore maple is directly over the. The wires there, um so you could pr- prune a um a large portion of it off and. Potentially make it safe for the meantime, um it's strong wooded and, you know, it's uh. Um, it has good structural integrity in the top of the crown there, um not to say that it's couldn't fail if. If we did that, but it would make it safer in the meantime.
Yeah.
So that is possible.
And it is pretty far in that person's yard, so that might be a situation where their kind of thoughts on the matter, I don't know, might be. Important too, but uh but maybe that's a salvageable one, maybe. Um, if we're trying to kind of be as conservative, even more so than I'm sure you've already been.
Yeah.
You know, um. Alright, the next one, thanks, again, um okay, so it's just that one over there, which we, you said that the homeowner's been wanting it down for a couple of years, so that one's. Okay, okay, um one forty-four, Old County Road, Black Locust, that one, it's leaning, but I mean, all black locust lean, right? Like, is that kind of like what they do?
Not all, I just, it looks like it drew that way to try and get to the light, it might have had some plate lifting at some point and it's on a hill, um.
Okay.
And that one, you know, with the lean and all all black locusts have vertical cracking and stuff, so if there were a storm or something like that, it's. It's more than likely that it's gonna go the direction that of the lean and, you know, with that, it would it would definitely hit the wires across the road. So that one, I mean, if if you leave it. Eventually, it's gonna do what gravity and, you know, nature have intended for it eventually.
Would you say that one is unhealthy as well as, I'm looking at a picture from summer and I'm not seeing much in the way of greenery. Growing on it, it's like a tiny little sprig at the top, but there's.
It's, it has a, it has a poor live crown ratio and it, most of these trees do because they they don't have any lower canopy because of the woods. Um, but, you know, if it caught wind up top, it has a heavy sail at the top, which makes it, you know. There's more pressure going on at the bottom of that tree, it's catching sail at the top.
So that's sound, looks similar.
Yeah, those are similar situations, the the one that's further from us in that picture actually has a um. Has a vertical crack that you can see light through, um that's about two and a half to three feet long, um. And that's about twenty feet up in the tree, um so I'd say that one is. Moderate to high risk level and um the other one also has some vertical cracking and has a uh. A little bit of plate lifting on the backside of it at the base.
Similar?
Similar situations, there's a a good portion of missing bark at the base of that tree, um. That pretty much all these locusts have vertical cracking where you can see through the bark and there's some decay inside, so.
Uh, no, I'm keeping up. That one looks, it's just the one that's.
There's one there, and there's uh, I don't know if I can, you can really see in that picture, but there is a smaller black cherry there that was uh. Just uh the top broke out at some point, it's just as far standing there and it's um not sure if it's alive or dead, but it's all covered in in vines. There's some more examples of that where the the tops have broken out of those trees in the past and um they just have. Whatever suffering growth has come out of the wounds of those, it seems to keep them alive, um poor structural integrity, um.
It's a shame, cause those are pretty with the vines on them.
A lot of people like the vines, people don't, but.
Yeah, go ahead, Chase.
You said there's a five year rotation for pruning?
For pruning, correct.
Do you know when the last time it was pruned and when the next time is scheduled?
Oh, I would have to look it up, um. I I, off the top of my head, I think it was twenty twenty-three. What am I entirely positive?
So a little ahead of schedule.
Yeah, but like, you know, trees across the road like this, we're not gonna prune those, those are outside of the clearance zone, you know, we're we're. You know, we're we're not really there to maintain trees across the street, you know, once they reach decline and we feel they're at risk. That's when we wanna come through and remove them.
Across the street is you're looking for more decline issues?
Yeah, exactly, cause we're we're not gonna prune those trees, you know, um and I know you you say you like the vines and stuff, you know. That is, that's not good for the tree's health, you know, I understand the, you know, the aesthetics of it and stuff, but um.
But you could plant some trees back in that spot, cause that looks like it would be a spot that would.
You could, um, you could talk to the homeowner in the air, the the. majority of the area on the ground there is covered with vines in that area. There's some, there's a lot of low growing shrubbery stuff that is in the woods there. It's not the best spot for replanting, but if we cleared a smaller area, we could probably replant there, yeah.
Do you ever plant shrubbery instead of trees or is that not something that's permitted to be used from?
It's, uh, we haven't done too much of that, but I do like the idea of it and it's is is a possibility for sure.
Because maybe it just looks like, especially with that speed control that everybody had mentioned, that just looks like it would be a kind of a straightaway for a little bit of speed and having something there might be nice and shrubbery or something. Jump in anytime. Oh, this is the dead one that we addressed, so we can kind of. Okay, I don't think we've talked about this yet.
This is a this is a pitch pine down the towards the end of the that stretch of road there. And the the canopy on this one is entirely over the wire. So with with Jordan's pruning specs there, if he were to prune this, it would just be topping the entire tree and taking the top out of it, so.
And also, even if you take it down, there's still going to be a fair amount of foliage and trees covered there in that location because it's just that one tall pitch pine. Okay, yeah, I mean, it sounds like I love the idea of replanting. Maybe even some shrubbery contemplating that, but.
I I like that idea. It's, you know, it's not commonly done by towns and stuff, but I do I really do like the idea of re-putting some shrubs in there. Probably evergreens or something like that on the side of the road. Give some color and foliage flower.
Yeah, and it's probably faster growing, so maybe the the time that you're going to have to wait for new trees to grow won't feel as long if there's some other type of foliage in there.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm a proponent of the seventeen trees that here, cutting those, you know, with you working to with the homeowners in different areas of trying to keep it as becalic as possible. Board member thoughts?
I mean, it's a nice road. I drive it almost every day and it is nice, but you two are the experts. And, you know, if you say that they really should go, then, you know, I think we should maybe give that some consideration, you know, that like you said, with the replanting, then you know, eventually we'll come back to something close to, you know, what it is now with those that need to go. Well, I would tend to agree that maybe, you know, they should be removed because there could be a liability as well if one goes over on a car. You know, it was an very unfortunate accident, that that's a big liability for the town.
Well, I I I think it's really important that we put in a provision that there be replanting. And I know we've gone with one, one and a half in other situations when it's residential, but at the very least, one for every tree that we take down.
Yeah, and usually too with the town, we kind of leave it to the discretion of the tree warden. It's been it's the homeowner. We tend to give more of a definitive condition, but here we just kind of leave it up to his discretion and kind of share our thoughts.
You'll plant trees there, right?
Yeah, of course. I mean, the section that you showed in between Talbot's Point and one fifty-one there, there's there's a pretty large swath of layout off the road there, so I still want consent. I don't need permission from the homeowners to plant there, but there there is a big opportunity to do some replanting in there. That makes sense.
It doesn't. You're saying that they're town trees on town. Town right away. Why wouldn't you replant in the town right away? Wouldn't you then need the owner's consent to cut the trees down?
That's what I'm saying. I I wouldn't need the owner's consent to to replant in that area there.
It's just on their property and you don't have to, correct me if I'm wrong, but to replace them, you don't have to replace them in the townway. You have the discretion to put them in the homeowner's yard if they.
With the consent.
With the consent, so.
To their yard.
So there's a fair amount of broad discretion for homeowner kind of to, it doesn't have to be in the townway that we're planting. It can be within the same area, maybe back a little further, depending on whatever the.
I thought you said very close to the tree that's coming down, right?
It depends on the location. So as we've talked about the, you know, if we're removing a tree like the, say that pitch pine, the last one that we showed there, where it's densely wooded there, it's on a hill and it's a pretty mute point to try and replant something there that's comes from a nursery and all the other vegetation in there is rooted up from a seed and it's it's going to have tough competition to make it better. Unless it was something that's very vigorous and got enough sunlight, it's probably not going to survive, so.
Fair.
Yeah.
Are we saying but one for one tree just in a different location?
It's really discretion of the tree warden. We're just sharing with him what ideally we would like, but we generally don't condition the town to do one for one. That's really more homeowner. That's just we're not required to customarily. That's not how we've done it. And and it seems like and and for how I've understand it just from past dealings, that they have worked with the homeowners, you know, to replant as best they can, but we we kind of have to rely on the expertise of the town tree warden for that.
It seems like in in the situation where a great deal of care for the trees on the road, you know, the trees removed will be, and the replanting will be done on Old County Road. Can't say it's in the same exact location of where that tree is, but it will be on County Road.
Yeah, I'm I'm struggling. Just because I do share, you know, a lot of the sentiments about how beautiful this road is. And as I'm sitting here looking, kind of going tree by tree, I'm seeing some of the trees that I think are the most beautiful trees. I can just see from this Google image, they're clearly in bad shape. So I think I am deferring to your expert opinion on what needs to happen here, but would ask that we at least do a one for one replanting. I loved your idea about some type of shrub. And I think it's really important that we can keep it as close to where the original vegetation was. Because I do agree with Mr. Pryor that this can be a little bit of a racetrack with motorists. And I I know it makes me, I don't speed down here, but it makes me slow down with having the trees or vegetation so close to the roadway. So I I do agree that if we remove it and don't put something back in sort of the same area. Understanding with that that pine, that it's densely vegetated and makes sense to put one back there, but if we could or you could, as you're doing this, give special consideration to each location that you're removing a tree from.
I would say just because of, even though there's, you know, a broad layout in there and I have a lot of space on town property to replant, I would defer to the homeowner's consent. I don't want to plant in front of somebody's house that doesn't want a tree there. That's never a good situation. I don't want people trying to kill an alley town shade tree that was just planted because they didn't want it there in the first place, so. We'll go through the steps to definitely get those trees replanted. I can't say it's going to be exactly in the same locations for multiple reasons, but that is also one of them.
Yeah, I would speculate that they would be in agreement to having the tree put back.
I hope so.
There's not really necessarily a view that's being obstructed where you might want to have a tree removed. And I think that it sounds like a lot of the residents really enjoy this close dense vegetation, the tree canopy. The speed barrier.
Well, before we take a motion to close a public hearing, if anybody has anything else to add, otherwise we're going to close the public hearing and then we'll do any deliberations additional and take a a vote. Did I have everybody? Okay, good. All right, good. Thank you for everything, all your input. Thank you for coming forward and talking. We appreciate it very much. So I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for one twenty-one, one twenty-three, one thirty-nine, one forty, one forty-four, one fifty-one, one sixty, one seventy-one, one seventy-seven, Old County Road, to Talbot's Point Road and to Village Drive.
I second the motion.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, great. So I guess we can, any more deliberations? I think we've kind of covered all these, so if we're good, if there's no further comments, then I'll take a motion to approve the application to remove the seventeen trees. Oh, you do? Okay, great. Yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
So under procedural history, on March seventh, twenty twenty-five, an application for a scenic road permit was filed for the purpose of removing seventeen trees of mixed species, which is located within the town layout and properties located at Old County Road, Talbot's Road Point and Village Drive. The application was accompanied by photos of the subject trees. After proper notice was given, the public hearing was opened on April first, twenty twenty-five and closed on April first, twenty twenty-five. The board reviewed the application and all other materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing. The board received and gave due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing. The following board members attended the public hearing and are eligible to vote on the matter. Jennifer Rising, Melissa Dugan, Anne McManus, and Eileen Stars. Findings, the board makes the following findings. One is a request to remove seventeen trees of mixed species located within the town layout on the following properties as presented here. And number two, the applicant states that each of the seventeen trees have potential to impact overhead power lines.
Is there something, is there a place that we can add that we just ask the tree warden to replace trees with, I don't know, working with homeowners and?
We will have it. We can add it as a condition instead of a finding.
Uh, yeah, because I just from past ones, I just don't remember putting it on as a more of like a suggestion. I don't remember ever making.
It's always been a condition.
It's always been a condition, so.
Typically, the language states one point five trees replacement to be planted at the discretion of the tree warden.
Okay.
So we might want to discuss whether it's one point five or one.
Okay.
And a mix of trees and shrubs planted at the discretion of the tree warden.
I didn't realize it was a condition. Okay, so then I misspoke earlier when I thought that it was just we left it to their discretion. Yeah, okay. Thanks, and we could even, yeah. Always a learning process. We could maybe do some shrubbery too, like one for one.
What did you have in there for the conditions for the replacement? Uh, we didn't reference it, so I'm happy to add something.
Okay, I guess we have.
Typically, the, I mean, we can go back to the findings in a minute, but typically we would say for every tree removed, either a tree or shot or tree or shrub should be replaced in a location at the discretion of the tree warden.
And is close to the original location is practical, is practical. Maybe as close as practical, practical, because I'm wondering if practical really denotes that it's not necessarily, he can move it, it's if it's not practical to put it there.
One tree or shrub, shrub should be planted in a location as close as practical to the removal at the discretion of the tree warden. So if we just pop back onto findings, is there any finding you'd like me to add? I wasn't sure if we wanted to mention this, the state of some of the trees were also in rot or decay and not just, not just the overhead wires.
Yeah, I agree. We shouldn't put that in there. Because I would not be supporting this if I wasn't seeing that with my own uneducated eyes on a Google image. So I think that testimony was very important.
Say most, if not all, trees were, because they, none of them seem to be really healthy, right? They were, would you say, I think, the pine, that one pine tree?
There was, there was a few that didn't have, uh, rot or decay.
So most might be those trees display signs of decay and rot. Yeah, maybe like a safety component too, or there's that kind of.
On number two, yeah, could we add it's a potential to impact the power lines, but also it has a potential to impact motorists and pedestrians if they were to come down. I don't know how you'd say that, but the safety of the motor and pedestrians.
Most trees display signs of decay and rot, um, yeah, per the tree warden.
As described by the tree warden?
Yeah. So it's not us determining. Maybe the applicant states that each, oh, yeah, because the applicant is the town. Yeah, most trees display sign of decay and tree, as described by the tree warden. Yeah. Take a motion then.
Are we just doing for the findings then? Okay, I'm Melissa Dugan, motion to adopt these findings as the findings of the planning board.
I second that motion.
Uh, yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Let me move on to the conditions. At the public hearing, the planning board considered potential conditions of approval for this permit. The applicant should be bound by these conditions. Number one, for every tree removed, one tree or shrub shall be planted in a location as close as practical to the removal at the discretion of the tree warden.
Should we say shall instead of should?
Maybe to the removal site. At the discretion of the tree warden. At number two, this permit shall lapse. Tree removal has not been completed within three years from the date of approval. And number three, tree removal shall be subject to conditions specified on the tree work permit application.
I, Melissa Dugan, move to impose the above conditions of approval upon any approval of the permit.
I second the motion.
Yes.
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 And then it's just a motion to either approve or deny the permit.
I, Melissa Dugan, motion that the board approve the scenic road application for the above described tree removal.
I second the motion.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Great, thank you.
All right, next is thank you very much. Intersection of Dewey Street and Main Street, scenic road permit, Town of Sandwich. For the purpose of removing one maple, red maple tree, I'm going to read in the public hearing notice. In accordance with last general law, chapter forty, section fifteen C, the Scenic Road Act, the Sandwich Planning Board and the Sandwich Tree Warden will hold a joint public hearing on a request for the removal of one red maple tree located within the town road layout at the intersection of Dewey Ave and Main Street. The tree to be removed will be marked for public view. The Town of Sandwich is the applicant and the property owner. The public hearing will be held on April first, twenty twenty-five at the Sand Hill School Community Center, sixteen Dewey Ave Sandwich Mass at six P M. The public record information can be viewed at the Planning and Development Office, Jennifer Rising Chair, Sandwich Planning Board, publication Sandwich Enterprise on March eleventh and twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing for the scenic roads permit.
I second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, great. So here's our tree. Take it away.
So this red maple is located at the islands in between six A Dewey Ave and then Main or Old Main Street there. And it's very. And it's right in the middle on Dewey Ave. there where people often park, they don't go to, or walk, or go to Snowy Owl there. So there's usually cars right there. Last year, in the winter, we, we removed a large dead leader from the, the right side of this tree as we're looking at it. And threw down some other deadwood to just try and limp it along and keep it safer. And came back this year and the, the entire, the entirety of the left, right side of this tree is dead, except for the lower lead comes off about thirty feet on the, on the shrunk there. The right side is alive. But I further inspected the tree and on both sides, there's large girdling roots around the base of this that are choking off the stem, cutting off the flow of water nutrients to the canopy in this tree. And I assume it's just going to keep continuing on, on declining. And with the often present targets of cars in the area there, right underneath it, I've done to make the decision to remove this tree.
Does the tree V, or is that two trees that were?
No, the tree V. So it's, it's one tree that, those two stems basically go almost all the way to the ground. So their, the two stems are touching maybe a foot off the ground or so. And then the, the section of what we call included bark, which is two, two stems touching each other is, as you can see from the picture, about eight to ten feet there.
Oh, yes, please, Jim Rogers, right?
Yes.
Do you mind if I ask, are you an arborist?
No, I'm not, no.
Oh, okay, Jim.
I'm a retired teacher.
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, you seem very knowledgeable.
Pretending to be an arborist.
Yeah, I know, I appreciate it, yeah.
We looked at this tree a few days ago and thought it looked pretty good. And then we talked to James and he pointed out that the right side of it is pretty decrepit. And there are roots girdling around it. So we agree. Once again, we, we respect James and his opinion. One thing about this, though, the tree wouldn't fall on a car if there were no cars there. And that issue of that park, which has become a parking lot, is, is a big one to us. And I wondered if you wouldn't take that up as, as an agenda item sometime in the near future. It's, it's something straight out of the Joni Mitchell songbook to me, where you cut down the trees and allow a parking lot beneath it. So I think that's something that's, that should be considered. And I think this, this board might be the, the proper venue for it. Thanks.
I have a question about that. And you might know the answer.
Question.
Not, I'm not sure that that's in our purview, but I am curious as to the origin of those cars, because this is my neighborhood and I see them.
Yeah, it's mine too. I, I think the origin is, it's the employees who were told to park there.
Of the Snowy Owl.
So that there's room for the customers at the coffee shop. I think that's what's going on.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I noticed there was a house that was having some work done, a significant amount of work done back there on that little extension, and I wondered if it was contractors, but then they're still there, so.
I don't know. If, if it isn't your purview, I'd like to know whose it is, though.
Yeah, yeah, but just, so for, for your information. So Snowy Owl received a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals for their operation at that site. If there's any parking issues or they're expanding their parking that they were approved into a different area, we can notify the building commissioner, check the special permits, see if they're in violation of anything. And then, you know, either enforce that from the special permit, or if they wanted to modify something, it would be another public hearing to go through that adjudicary process with the zoning board of appeals.
How do you find out who's parking there? Do you go to Snowy Owl and ask if it is their employees? Like, how would you even make that determination?
I believe that the, the building department has asked in the past, and the majority is, sometimes it's for the fish hatchery across the road, but usually when that's only, when that's open. And then, for the most part, when he's done business and asked, it has been employees of, of the business.
And what, what are they allowed, Leanne? What, what specifically have they allowed for parking?
I would have to double check. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
But I can definitely take that up.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's a good suggestion. Could you, would you think about planting a tree here again?
Yeah, so we have this location open to, there's actually two or three memorial trees that are planted here. So we've been using that as a site for memorial tree plantings a little bit. So we planted one last year and the previous tree, when Craig planted one, died two or three years ago in there.
Okay, I think that sounds fine, all right. Good?
Yes.
All right, anybody have any other comments before we close the public hearing? All right, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so any deliberations? It sounds like, for me, it sounds, makes sense to cut it down and then replace it with a tree at the tree warden's discretion.
I agree.
Yes.
Okay.
And probably with similar addition to the findings and similar addition to the conditions.
So under procedural history, on March 7th, 2025, an application for scenic road permit was filed for the purpose of removing one red maple tree in the town road layout and properly located at the intersection of Dewey Ave. and Main Street. The application was accompanied by photos of the subject tree. After proper notice was given, the public hearing was opened on April 1st, 2025, and closed on April 1st, 2025. The board reviewed the application and all other materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing. The board received and gave due consideration to testimony given at the public hearing. The following board members attended the public hearing and are eligible to vote on this matter. Jennifer Ryzig, Melissa Dugan, Anne McManus, and Eileen Starks. Findings: The board makes the following findings. Request to remove one red maple tree at the intersection of Dewey Ave. and Main Street. The surrounding area is shaded by trees.
Can we add the same findings from?
Say, subject tree is showing rot and decay?
It's in decline and...
It's in decline?
Yeah.
Imposes a health and safety risk?
Yeah, it's, has potential to impact cars parked in the area.
There's just safety risk if you want to move the cars there, because if you don't have the cars there anymore, then it might not be as big of a...
There's always people walking around there.
Yeah, safety is probably, yeah.
I, Melissa Dugan, motion to adopt these findings as the findings of the planning board.
I second that motion.
Yes.
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 Do that later. Too fast for me. Okay, the conditions. At the public hearing, the planning board considered potential conditions of approval for this permit. The applicant should be bound by these conditions. This permit shall lapse of tree removal has not been completed within three years from the date of approval.
One for one at the discretion of the tree warden.
One tree shall be provided for every tree removed?
It's only one tree, right, for the tree, the tree removed? In the same location? In close proximity to, maybe, so you have a little bit of...
Sure.
In close proximity to the... At the discretion of the tree warden.
So one tree shall be planted in close proximity to the tree removed, planted at the discretion of the tree warden.
Maybe at the discretion of the tree, yeah.
I'm just going to add that language regarding the work permit. I don't know it verbatim, but just adding work permit. And if that's okay with you, I'll, I'll put in that language. That's in the other one.
I, Melissa Dugan, move to impose the above conditions of approval upon any approval of the permit.
I second that motion.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, great, so we'll move on to...
And then to the final votes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't...
I, Melissa Dugan, move that the planning board approve the scenic road application for the above described tree removal.
I second that motion.
Yes.
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 Yes. So now we can move to the 26 Village Drive, approval not required, canal land survey and permitting Inc. This is for the purpose of a lot conveyance. We'll start when Leanne's ready, we can... Yeah, we did.
We did.
Okay, yeah.
This is a pretty straightforward approval not required. Basically, we have two lots that already have pre-existing single-family homes. They are swapping a portion of land, parcels A and B, between each other. Doesn't create any new lots, there's already access, and it meets all the criteria for, for approval not required endorsement.
Are they doing this for frontage, or what precipitated this request?
They did not outline to us the exact reason for the request.
I was trying to add up the frontage that would be gained and lost to see if that was the reason, if perhaps it was part of a bigger plan.
I would just be guessing as to the exact reason. I mean, there's, there's a couple for straightening out lot lines a little bit. Maybe there was someone, someone was to put a shed in the rear back, or, you know, there may be a number of issues. It could be for more frontage. It could be due to the driveway location, it's kind of shifted, like a little bit over on one side of the other property, so maybe cleaning that up, but...
I'm fine with it. It's an approval not required. It's innocuous, it's fine. I will say the applicant's not here, correct?
No.
No. Oh, I was just going to say, because I had a sale of real estate with a similar, like this, and there was an issue with the mortgage. They didn't take the mortgage off and ended up being a title issue because there was a mortgage encumbering. And a lot of times, if there's not an attorney involved, they don't know it's that. So I was going to say, if the applicant is here, I was going to point that out, but, but anyways, aside from that, yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it. So, okay. If there's no discussion, we'll take a motion to endorse the A and R.
I make a motion to endorse the approval not required for 26 Village Drive.
I second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so I'll sign the A and R.
Yep.
Two of them?
We hand this out. We received this from a member that attended our public hearing on zoning. We can start re-talking again.
I, I'm sure this got in town. This was so strange. So we're going on to board discussion, proposed zoning amendments update. There was, this is just a memo delivered?
Yeah, so there's, there's two things I want to discuss with the boards tonight, and one I'm really looking for guidance on from you and direction. The first is that the definition that we adopted at our public hearing for gross floor area has been updated by the state. It was inconsistent with the building code, and the building commissioners went to the state, they discussed it, so they ended up changing it so it'd be consistent with the building code. But now ours is inconsistent, so we're going to have to hold another public hearing to rectify that. So I'm going to have to get a meeting out of order. So I'm going to be looking for your availability either the 22nd or the 23rd of April. I'd have to put a legal ad in the paper this week for that, and if we could do it earlier in the day. We could also potentially do it all via Zoom, if you preferred to do it virtually, depending on, I suppose, the second part of this as to whether you want to move forward with any other changes to your zoning.
And this is just, this meeting is specifically for the change in definition?
That would be the first intent of the meeting, and then the second part is really what I'm looking for, for guidance on from you all. After our public hearing, there was a, a member that attended that expressed his frustration and concern regarding the extra-large units that we hadn't undertaken during this effort. So he let me know after that public hearing that he was planning to amend our bylaw at town meeting. So, you know, I said, let me work with you, audit, and see if I can get something back before the board. We'll go through and see if there's any kind of leeway, because at the time, the state came out with additional guidance, which kind of sounded like maybe we'd be able to make the size bigger. So we went through this whole effort and had counsel involved. We ended up on the phone to the Attorney General and, and no, in fact, we do have to adopt the exact state's definition to be compliant. But if we wanted to add something to that, we can. So if we wanted to add, you know, to our use table that an, an extra-large ADU is allowed either by right or by special permit, and then add a definition that states what an extra-large ADU is. It's something we can consider now, especially that we have to do another public hearing. We could undertake that effort. There's just a couple different ways that we could do it, so I'm looking for guidance to either, A, you want to undertake this and you're going to task me with drafting it the best way possible. B, you want to keep our existing ADU bylaw, retitle it, and place it elsewhere, because it worked and it went through the process already at one point. Or C, you want to just move forward what, what we already proposed. Feels a bit rushed, and we'll take it up again in the summer.
So real quick, just for back, just the definitional, just so everybody knows what the definition for the first item. It was about habitable space and whether it's defi, gross...
Gross floor area.
Gross floor area, and whether it's defined from the interior plane versus the exterior plane of the wall.
Correct.
And currently, we're what, exterior?
Currently, we're exterior, but building code's interior.
Okay.
So it's a difference of like six inches.
So that's what the first definitional item would be with that meeting, wouldn't it?
Yes, so we would have to hold a public hearing to update that.
And that's the only change? It didn't have anything to do with walkways and closets and...
No, no. It still kept the same definitions that, you know, a basement would be counted towards your gross floor area. A enclosed porch or a garage would not. So it kept kind of all the same principles as before, it just kind of defined a little bit differently where you would take the measurement from.
Which was helpful to the end of getting maybe a larger size.
Slightly, slightly, and it's just, it's consistent with the building code. I mean, it's difficult when you have all these regulations and laws and they, they conflict with one another.
Yeah. And then on the second topic regarding, and I'm going to read this gentleman's letter in, in, in just one minute, but just kind of before I do, one thing that I thought is important to know while we're all thinking about this, and, and you can kind of fix any details that I might have incorrect or add to. There was the, in our discussion last time, we were concerned with not getting this bylaw approved. So we were, we were really looking to keep it lean, especially we were talking about the landscaping piece, so that the AG's office would not deny it, so then we would not have to have no bylaw, do the, you know, by right and face maybe potential grant issues. Leanne had mentioned that they've since determined or, you know, found out that there is a period of... Leanne had mentioned that they've since determined or, you know, found out that there is a period of like three years.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be pretty lenient with communities as they go forward with it. Because it, it, it's a little bit different to when we do regular zoning changes. Because they made it a protected use, it's already in effect. So no matter what we do locally, when someone comes in and wants one, we have to go off the model state bylaw until we adopt it locally. So in that way, we, there won't be any repercussions for us in terms of grants or potential lawsuits. Because we already have to go off the state's model. So we do have more time to kind of think about different items that we may potentially want to put in. And see if it passes the AG's office. If you fail on town meeting floor, you have a cooling off period of two years. If you fail the AG's office, you can bring it back again.
Okay. So I thought that was important because it might be an opportunity. I wanted the, and then, you know, maybe I'll read his letter and then, but just kind of, I thought that was important to kind of start on. I know that was a big piece of our discussion last time. So, okay. Dear Planning Board members. I am, oh, and one other thing. This is a gentleman that came before us at the last planning board meeting.
Yes.
Alright. Dear Planning Board members, I am writing again to express my dissatisfaction with the draft article 19 of the annual town meeting warrant. In which proposed modifications to our zoning bylaw with respect to quote by right, unquote, accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Are presented. Specifically, I wish to comment on the proposed size limitation that the article is approved without modification at town meeting. As you know, the ADU size limit under our current bylaw is 900 square feet of quote habitable living space, end quote. Or 50% that of the primary residence, whichever is less. However, the size limit imposed under the state's recent Affordable Homes Ag, AHA. Is significantly less, 900 square feet of quote gross floor area, end quote. Or 50% that of the primary residence, whichever is less. It has been explained to me, the town must adopt the new state definition. But I also know that the town can also adopt less restrictive ADU size limits under its own zoning bylaw. Simply stated, by modifying the size limit of the by right ADU to agree with that of state. Under the AHA, the planning board will impose a significant reduction in the allowed amount of living space. And it all comes down to the units of measurement. Habitable living space does exclude closets, hallways, stairwells, wall gaps and other utility areas from the calculation. Gross floor area does not provide for any such exemptions, but rather is calculated based on exterior dimensions of the structure. If the draft article is presented and approved at town meeting without some sort of effective remedy. The proposed change in size limitation would essentially reduce the habitable living space of an ADU and sandwich to approximately 600 square feet. Which for comparison is about the same combined area as four parking spaces. Now imagine yourself confined to such a small area and you will immediately understand how uncomfortable such a residence would become. However, there's a bigger problem. If the intent of the bylaw enacted to promote the creation of affordable housing units. I believe that the size restriction imposed by the AHA will have the opposite effect and discourage most people from building these types of residences. In closing, I implore the planning board to work to restore the ADU size limitation. As stated under our current bylaw by creating a new category of ADUXL. Or by some other appropriate nomenclature that would allow a larger ADU by right and sandwich. I suggest that a gross floor area limit of 1,400 square feet would be reasonable equivalent to what our residents have already approved at our last town meeting. And would likely be viewed favorably at our upcoming town meeting as well. Thank you for your consideration. Jack Picaro, 16 Orioleen. So just to kind of recap from our last meeting. The majority of the board seemed comfortable with tabling. A second ADU bylaw. Waiting for this to get the by right one to get approved, see if the A, the AG would be willing to, you know, maybe it would come down that they would allow us to increase the size. Because that was really the biggest consideration that we've been hearing from the public, which seems to be pretty consistent. But just adding a second bylaw, it might be too soon, too quick. Just given the landscape of everything, that's kind of where we were. Maybe to revisit it in the summer. Yeah, that was kind of where the conversation had. Was circling around. So Leanne, you confirm that the AG's office is not at this time allowing us to increase the by right size? So.
Yeah, it would have to be done separately. So when I spoke with council, she's obviously counseled to, to multiple towns in Massachusetts. And anyone that's undergoing this endeavor that wants a greater size, they are just adding it as a separate warrant article. They're adding it to the use table. They're calling it an ADUXL and then they're defining what they mean by that. If that was the route we were to go, we should think about whether that's something that's by right or something that's by special permit. But you are gonna be essentially creating two different types of units that you could have because we cannot restrict the by right one. So if someone avails of the extra large one, they're still entitled to a protected use by right.
And in preparation for the meeting, one idea that Leanne and I had discussed, and I think you were going to bring it to the count, to town council. I don't know where that, how that kind of worked out.
I did not receive a response.
So the idea that we had kind of, because played with, because everybody seems to be, you know, on the same page of our, the ADU bylaw that we had on the books. On the books, that was in, in effect, allowed for a bigger size. The idea that we thought about is allowing the by right ADU as the attorney general wants. And then allow, and then adding a bylaw or a U, in the use table. If they want to add up to an additional X amount, you know, 300 square feet. You know, to add on to the 19, 900, just kind of rough numbers I'm just throwing out. So you would cumulatively get a 1,200 square foot ADU, but only that extra 300 square feet would be by special permit. So in the decision that we would draft, it would be clear that the by right 900 square foot. Gross square foot, however they define it in the state, is being utilized. But they can kind of piggyback and make it a little bit bigger by special permit coming before us. So it, it limits it to maybe potentially having two ADUs right out of the gate. And, and kind of addressing the concerns of the public sooner than later. Now, that being said, Leanne would have to draft it really quickly. There'd be a lot of kind of behind the scenes movement. But it was just an idea that we had discussed and I thought.
We did. I posed the question to council. I didn't hear a response because it was, you know, mid-morning when I did that. I am a little bit nervous that that won't be accepted because me and Steve did, did meet with Amy Kessel. We kind of went through every. Actuality, eventuality, how we could get there. And it was really either that we add, we add its own section to the use table. I'm worried if we doctor the existing protected use one that we just kind of went through that process with, that that one will not go through that way. So I think it's either we adopt its own separate section where we add an, an extra large ADU to the use table. We decide if it's a special permit or a by right use and then we add a definition of what that is. Or the other option is to look at our existing ADU bylaw that we presented in 2020. It already received town meeting votes. And we rename it. We could rename it, you know, we were looking at other, other terms, a carriage house, a coach house, bylaw. It's a little bit more restrictive. It has that 900 square feet of habitable space, but you have to have over half an acre of land to have one. And it's, it's by special permit unless you meet the requirements for the R1 and the R2 zoning district. So that's either just over an acre. Or an acre and a half. So those ones would be by right if you had that land area. If you didn't and you had 20,000 square feet or above, it would be by special permit. There's already owner occupancy requirements in that.
Which would be another option.
Two ADUs, which we had talked about. If we do the ADUXL, we'd be kind of allowing it by special permit in all zoning districts. And it'd be kind of be more up to the board to adjudicate how that would work.
So playing, playing it forward, say if we want to try to gamble a bit with what the AG might allow or might not allow. If we did a special permit only for an additional piece to thereby make the one by right ADU deemed to be XL. Right? But they get the by right piece and maybe an added room is the special permit, you know, kind of however we want to frame that. Say that passes town meeting because there does seem to be some sort of support for that. Goes to AG, gets kicked back. The worst thing that could happen, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a cooling off period if it passes town meeting. It's just a matter of then just bringing it forward and just dropping that. And then maybe at that time, we'll be revisiting it in the summertime. To repre, to re-present it in a different.
I guess I'm just concerned that tomorrow we submit the legal ad for the hearing and I immediately get a response from council saying, you can't do that.
Oh, it's tomorrow?
Yeah, so the legal ad has to go in the paper by noon tomorrow, I believe.
Oh, by noon?
Yes, yeah. So we kind of have it drafted and ready to go. And I'm sorry that this is like super tight, but it's all this really transpired Friday.
Yeah. You know what? I would, I would ask, if Jack Picaro's gonna watch this, that he write to the AG's office. And ask that they allow towns to increase the by right size. Because I think that would be, it would, it would keep the intent of what they're trying to do. And allow homeowners to have a more usable space. And I would love the AG's office to take that into consideration and allow us, say for example, to take what they're putting as by right. From 900 square feet to 1,200 square feet, keeping their definition the same. But I don't see the harm in that. So maybe him writing to them might help.
Yeah, and I think there has been a lot of controversy around it. A lot of towns feel the same. Some are okay with it. In those very dense urban settings. 900 square feet is absolutely practical. But when you're looking at larger lot zoning and you have more open space and. They're really to be used as, as year-round housing for families, it, it's small. So I did go back and look at building permits for sizes to see what we're typically seeing. We're seeing between 1,200 and 1,400 square feet. So a gross floor area. So our current bylaw is 900 square feet habitable space. That doesn't include all the walkways, basements. Bathrooms, closets, but that, that's the size we're seeing, the 13 to 1,400 square foot.
And the by right doesn't have a minimum lot size requirement?
It's on every lot size. So the smaller lots, you're gonna be a little bit hamstrung with lot coverage.
So I have two questions. One, why are we considering a piggyback onto? Verbage that's been handed down by the state when we're not sure that, um, that would fly instead of just doing a separate warrant? Separate item for the XL?
I mean, I would prefer to do a separate, to have it separated. And the quantum of voting is different too. So the, the, um, the by right protected use ADU from the state is a 50% majority vote of town meeting. Any amendment to that, that would change the characteristics, requires a two-thirds vote. So if we were to do something separate, that is a two-thirds vote of town meeting.
But then that goes back to the conversation we had at the last meeting about, then essentially with the additional bylaw, it would be a second. ADU and there's not a lot of discretion. We'd have to revisit the bylaw to kind of build in conditions within and that was why we were gonna revisit it.
Why would it be a second ADU if asked to come before the planning board?
Yeah, ADUs shall usually be granted. So I mean, if you had a, a primary dwelling where someone put on their protected use ADU. And then said, I also want to do an extra large one. I'm gonna come from the planning board. Those permits shall be usually granted unless there's something really unique about it.
And that's why we drafted all the conditions kind of within. And we spent a, a lot of time with the one that we currently have, like a significant amount of time. Which is what I think we were intending to do in the summer, just to give it some more thought.
What is the, the vehicle that's described as a guest house in our current?
So that has been, uh, that was eliminated through town meeting in, I believe, 21.
I think I was looking at an old, potentially, yeah.
We used to have guest house listed in our use table and we had absolutely no regulations surrounding it. So when we undertook the ADU effort. We struck guest house and we always had the intention that accessory dwelling unit could be used as an ADU. So that was the kind of the conversation that I had with Jeff last time was, that was always the intent. It was, you know, when rented or if rented, it was a year-round rental. But if someone wished to avail of their property and have it for guests when they were coming down for the weekend, they could also do that. It just could not be used for short-term rental.
Okay. So we have no vehicle right now for someone to build a separate dwelling unit. That is larger than 900 square feet of gross floor area?
Correct. We have a by right rental apartment that is 800 square feet. It's, it's different. It's a non-rental unit. It doesn't have all that fire separation that we would have with an ADU. An ADU is a completely separate dwelling unit. This is more, uh, the in-law apartment is more accessory to the home. So you could walk through, um, from the home into the unit. You are not allowed to do that with fire separation for accessory dwelling units. They're treated differently. So that kind of has its, its purpose to, to keep.
I didn't realize it was by noon tomorrow. Cause what I was thinking was is if we could try to accomplish a larger size. And piggyback off the by right, that might ameliorate some of the, the issues that were happening. But I think it might be rushed by noon tomorrow, then you might get some unintended consequences and I, I think that's.
Yeah.
That's tricky.
Leanne, would there be any way to, um, if we went with the XL? And, and made that an option, that then we could somehow condition that they then give up their right to the by right ADU?
I don't think so. It, it's kind of a chicken and the egg, which one comes first? If you do. No, in either situation, they could get the next one. Cause we can't unreasonably regulate it. So we can't tell anyone that they don't have a right to that.
So it's basically a backdoor way of getting to.
But they would still have to meet the title.
Five, two are.
I mean, it's incredibly expensive.
And the impervious surfaces and that, there are some.
That we can win.
Conditions that would restrict everyone from putting two ADUs.
Would it still be pursuant to like the lot coverage and all that as well?
It is pursuant to all those things. The A, I mean, they're incredibly expensive to build. I think our greatest fear would be turning a, a single-family home into a three-family, essentially. But if we had the special permit provision on the XL. We could require owner occupancy of the site. So with, with the by right, we cannot, if there's two dwelling units, both could be, could be essentially two family. Both can be rented. The owner does not have to live there. We're seeing a trend down cape of, you know, um, business owners buying them and just, and just renting them out long-term. We're more year-round here. We're hoping to keep that. So I just think that the owner occupancy portion is probably really important if we were to go with another type of dwelling unit.
I would be curious to hear town councils, because I, I think there is some feasibility potentially with making the by right. An XL by special permit. Cause they're still getting the 900 square feet. They're getting that regardless. We're just allowing them to supersize it. And you can maybe add on conditions then. So it has not impacting in any way, shape or form their by right. But now it allows you basically to get our old bylaw back from a size perspective as close there to as possible.
So that was kind of the question me and Steve, you know, spoke to council about. And at first that was, her reaction was, no, you're allowing it. You're, you're allowing it to get bigger. And then as she was texting the AG, she was like, no, wait a minute. No, you can't. Because it, it literally states in the law, you must adopt verbatim, fair definition.
Well, you would be.
But you're adding to it. You're, you're, you're changing some of the intent of it. You're adding to it. She was explaining that it needs to be its own separate article. It has to be its own separate section.
The definition of, like, cause is it?
On an ADU.
Oh, the definition of the ADU, not the definition of the gross square footage?
Exactly. Yeah. So the definition of an ADU talks about what it is, what it'll maintain, the purpose of it, the size of it. And that it shall be subject to site plan review. We were talking about adding an additional bullet point to that that said, you know, in order to gain an extra, you know, X amount of square footage, a special permit will be required. But, you know, when I looked back on all of our notes, I thought, you know what? That's, she cautioned against that. Because you're not adopting it in its entirety. You're adding to it as well as adopting it.
It couldn't ever be a situation where it was two permits, the permit for the by right ADU and then a special permit for making it larger and that's at our discretion. And then we are adopting the state's language for the by right, but then we have the ability to control that additional space that they're adding?
Yeah, I was, that, that's kind of the, the realm me and Jennifer were going. I think we would have to separate that out and see what that would look like. If it's its own separate bylaw with its own separate definition that says, um, you know, to increase the, the square footage of a by right.
What about a room? Like, could you do it, you know, instead of by square footage, you could do a room? Like you could make one.
I'm telling the building commissioner, like, please don't do this. Nothing arbitrary, please.
I know. I just feel like there's a way. It's just such a shame that we can't increase the size. Cause I think the intent is maintained.
I know. I, I really wish Jack was at our, you know, our initial discussions and not at our last public hearing. Cause it would have, you know, maybe. you know, maybe at that point when we had more time, it would have been an easier conversation to have, and we really could have gone through the, the process of what we could have done.
But we can do this if we have it as a separate warrant item, right? The, the problem we're facing is a time crunch.
There's a time crunch, yes. As to which direction to go in.
Well, it doesn't sound like we have too many choices about which direction we go in.
Basically of two. I mean, that's how I see it. Two lawful ones that I know are lawful. So we either minimally just add a definition for an ADU XL, um, allow it either by right or by special permit, and add it to the use table. So that's a very easy article, very easy change to make. Um, otherwise, we look at our existing ADU bylaws um, and talk about maybe just renaming it something else and also keeping that.
I like the first. I, I mean, it just seems easier. And adding it, but that would be essentially a second ADU by special permit.
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, which is what we had talked about last time, being too, too soon.
So there isn't a way that the special, the separate warrant could be an addition on a buy right ADU?
I mean, if you'd like, I could, um, if you wanted me to try and go with that first option, the, the newspaper, um, legal ad does not have to be super, super specific. I can keep it a little bit broader. Um, and I can vet that and see if that would fly. And if not, then we could go with the second XL version. Um, does that make sense? So we could go with trying to see if we could say that you can get a nine hundred square foot one by right, and if you want the additional added on in a separate section of the bylaw, you go for a special permit. And if we can't do it that way, then we just, um, I'll move forward with the language for an XL at fourteen hundred square feet.
I, I think, I, I'm still of the opinion just the buy right for now, because having been part of the conversations for drafting the ADU and the amount of detail that went into that and the, the little amount of discretion we have about conditions built into a bylaw, you're really, you can have, you know, multi-families on one lot. And I think the unintended consequences, it hasn't been, we don't have had enough of time to really think it through. Um, I think this is all very new, and ideally, it would be nice if the AG would consider, you know, if, um, are, are you Jack?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. I had mentioned, we read your letter, and we've been talking about it, but the issue is that we're having is, is the, the consensus of the board is, we would love to have the buy right ADU be larger. We would love that. The problem we're having is, is the AG's office isn't allowing us to do that. They don't, the ADU definition has to be maintained without any change. So we can't, we were talking about maybe, well, what if we did a buy right ADU of the nine hundred square feet as defined? And then we allowed an additional, I don't know, four, four hundred square feet to be added by special permit? So then now, we would be able to, by way of doing that, increase the size. Um, yeah, please come up. But the, the issue is, is the concern is from, correct me if I'm wrong, town council doesn't seem to think that that's gonna get approved by the AG. Um, that being said, and well, I'll let you go into one second. I do think if, if you wrote to the AG similar to what you're writing to us, it would be great. We would love for them to al- give us, them to allow us to be able to broaden it.
And I'm, I'm happy to do that, but um realistically, I don't think I'm gonna get a response by the Attorney General by noon tomorrow, which is the deadline that I think uh Leanne is under for noticing this decision. What, what, what we have here, this is, this is unbelievably uh difficult in terms of timing for you folks, because the way this has all come down. We had a zoning, perfectly good zoning bylaw that was voted at town meeting last year, allowing nine hundred square feet of habitable living space. Great decision. The state came along and imposed a more restrictive size requirement on us. And I think that this planning board needs to defend our zoning bylaw at this point and say, okay, fine, we can certainly adopt the definition of an ADU under the Affordable Homes Act. Great. But you know what? Our town's already decided that nine hundred square feet of habitable living space is the appropriate size for a building. And we're simply going to reintroduce that in our warrant. Now, I want, I, I, I really think that the planning board ought to be able to support that notion. It's nothing new to the town. It's something that's been in place. Building permits have been issued with that understanding. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that building permits have been issued with that size building in place, nine hundred square feet habitable living space, which translates to about thirteen, fourteen hundred, maybe more square feet of actual gross square footage.
So the problem that we're confronted with is we all seem to be in agreement that we would love, we are in support of creating a, a larger buy right. But our concern is, is that it goes to Attorney General and it gets denied. And now we're back here again.
Right, but, but if I may, please, Leanne, correct me if I'm saying anything incorrect, but I understood that the Attorney General was consulted on this and we were advised that we could in fact adopt a second category of ADUs, I don't know, ADU XL or whatever you choose to call it. That would allow us, it would remedy the inconsistency and allow us to maintain the definition essentially, that applies under the current bylaw.
The problem that we've had with that is we're looking to revisit it in the summer to do that, but if we add, and if we add another the, the issue that we're confronted with, that we've been wrestling with, and we've had a fair amount of conversation on it, um, is that if we add that other ADU by special permit, we don't, haven't had enough of time to really craft a bylaw to put conditions in there because of the rushed state of it. Well, one, hang on one second. And, and two, potentially that could result in three ADUs, and we haven't seen the impact of the buy right ADU yet. So in, in considering, you know, the town as a whole, is just hesitant on moving too quickly.
But respectfully, I would, I would I would counter that with the simple fact that we have in fact already adopted a bylaw that allows exactly what this uh, what I'm suggesting is the remedy to this.
We have, yes, we have, and at the time, that was only when one ADU would be allowed, and now we're confronted with a totally different set of circumstances, which makes that bylaw different.
Understood.
It changes the, it changes the character of it.
But isn't there a way for you to uh craft a zoning article that would make it clear that, you know, if you wanted to go XL, you wouldn't have a right for a second ADU on the property?
That's the definition of buy right, so the state's man, the state's language of the ADU is buy right.
That, that, that's right, but we're, we would be adopting the state's definition.
Well, that means that you would get, so for example, if you built the one that you wanna do under our special permit that, you know, if we did that, right? You could potentially also then thereafter add another ADU under this buy right, and there's nothing anybody can do. So then what would, the result would be is now you would have three dwellings on your property. And the buy right doesn't have a minimum square, uh, lot size. You're just restricted to zoning, you know, to lot coverage.
But couldn't you, under the zoning bylaw, impose your own lot size requirements?
Well, you could, but that's the problem that we're having is, is that's what we're gonna revisit in the summer. The problem is, is we haven't had enough of time to vet it. And we don't know the impact of this buy right yet. We just don't know it, and we don't know how it's gonna impact all the townspeople. So we hear you and we're trying to, you know.
I, I understand. I appreciate of your efforts, but there are impacts of homelessness and of young people leaving the Cape that also need to be addressed.
You know, nine hundred square feet if you're homeless is, is not terrible.
That's right.
Yeah.
But if nine hundred square feet if you're a young family certainly is limited.
Right, but I know from the homeless.
And nine hundred square feet if you're an elderly couple is also equally limiting.
Yeah.
So, I think, well, I, you know, I've, I've said my piece. I think you understand clearly where I stand on this. But um, if I don't, and I don't mean this as a threat, but if I don't get satisfaction, that if I don't enjoy the support of the planning board in this, I am prepared to take an amendment to the floor of town meeting that would request this.
And what would you, what would you take the second during a?
I would have to talk to, I would, I would have to talk to, to my council about it and decide on what would be the appropriate languages. Obviously, I'd be wanting to do it in the simplest terms possible. I don't think it's anything that peop- our residents, our townspeople couldn't understand, that we're simply looking at a way to restore the, the, the restrictions that are in place under the current bylaw.
And I do think from an educational standpoint, um, I think at town meeting, you know, we would have to discuss it as a board to be prepared to share the points that we've discussed and where we stand, and not that we don't disagree with you, it's just, it's a process.
Yes, I understand.
Educating people on what the potential results could be and, and those unintended consequences. And I think it's important to consider, and I think the town at meeting should be educated on that, so they can make an informed decision.
Of course, and there's a lot of uh, you know, conflicting opinions out there right now as to what can be done. Including, by the way, a model bylaw that was published by the state uh, and put on their state website for people in our situation, towns that are in our situation, where it clearly says the town has the opportunity to increase the minimum size of the ADU. So, I've said my piece, folks, and I apologize for my tone, but this is terribly frustrating. I, in my situation, I do have elderly uh in-laws that I'm, I'm, I'm hoping to find a, a place for. And I'm not looking to build more than one ADU, I can assure you. Although, I probably could if I wanted to. But all I'm looking to do is build something that my elderly parents can, can live in comfort in their, their last years. And if I have to wait another six months for that to me to pursue that, that's a problem for me. So, I
I think we're all in a predicament.
Beef is really with the state, because they're tying our hands.
Yeah.
Apparently, apparently so, but I think there's a way for, for uh the, the towns to, to navigate these uh these waters and
Just the problem is, is it can't be as quickly as we want.
Yeah, there is definitely a way for us to navigate this, but we're a little bit like building the space shuttle on the way to the moon, which I think you would argue is unsafe. So, we just really need to make sure that, you know, what we are putting before the voters is responsible. And not to say, you know, appreciative of, of you stating that you just have one living arrangement that you're trying to rectify.
It's, yeah.
That, that doesn't, that leaves a door.
It's not, it's not just my situation, of course. I'm just trying to put a face on, on the, on the matter. There's countless other people that are going to be affected by this, and if it's not something that's remedied quickly, a lot of people are going to be facing hardship because of it. And I think that uh, there, there, there is a way, and I hope the planning board finds a way. Hopefully, it's nothing that has to be introduced at town meeting. I don't think that's a productive way to do anything like this. I, I would love to have the planning board's support in a, in an amendment.
And we would love to have your support. And I think if the AG hears from the voices of the townspeople, they might not respond to you.
I will, I will send a letter to the AG.
That would really help us.
But that doesn't help me with the immediate problem of getting, of getting a public notice. All I'm asking for is a shot at town meeting. If the residents don't like the, a proposal, they can vote it down. And without your authorization for Leanne to go ahead with that public notice tomorrow, then there's no other avenue for me but to introduce it from the floor. So, it's not something I wanna do. I had hoped that this would be an easy decision for you folks, but I just you know, I, I rushed home early from a, a, a meeting on the island, and I just wanted to come in and say my piece one more time.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you came in, because it's a very thoughtful letter, and we do respect and appreciate, you know, you coming in and talking to us about it.
Thank you.
So, I have the opinion of leaving with the one by right, revisiting in the summer.
I do have one question. So, we're worried about unintended consequences. Let's say somebody does want to brail three, okay? Is there a way to fix that after the fact?
After what fact?
Well, let's say somebody does it and we say, oh my god, this is a real problem.
Oh, you would just go through this process again? Yeah, if you started to see three family, three families coming up, um, you could do that. I, I do think adding the owner occupancy requirement to the special permit for the extra large one, um, will, will help that use, because then you're essentially still just keeping it to two rental units. Um, and if someone's residing on the property, they tend to want good renters.
Because I know, we all acknowledge that housing's a problem here on Cape Cod, and we all acknowledge this is really a small I mean, what we're being allowed to do is really, really impractical in a lot of sense. Um, and to have this extra large one, I think is a great idea. Um, and I know what people are worried about. I get that. Um, I guess in my own head, I'm thinking, well, how big a problem could that turn into? And is there a remedy to fix it if it turns into being a big problem, and it sounds like there is? Just put that out there.
Is the Attorney General just not willing to uh evaluate what they're putting forth as a definition of an ADU? I don't understand why we can't have different language if we have, why can't they just put forth minimum language?
That's not how they decided to write it. It's very frustrating. Something was joint effort between state officials. It passed it through the legislature, um, it enacted and went into law. There is going to be so many revisions on this at the state level. I mean, we've already seen one since it's been enacted in February second. I mean, they changed the definition for gross floor area. I mean, that was within a month of enacting it. Um, it, it's tough, because, you know, I always have these conversations. Zoning isn't always rational, and it's not always logical. It's sometimes it's the way it's written, and you know, sometimes when you're writing zoning in a vacuum and you don't have a full process, you don't have a bunch of planners in a room that are helping you do it, and townspeople telling you what they wanna see, you can become very hamstringed and very short-sighted on what you're doing, and thinking you're doing something and putting forward a really good goal. But then, they have unintended consequences of they, they've made our zoning more restrictive instead of less restrictive. Um, and we have an opportunity to create something else. Um, and we can do that now, or we can do that in the summer and try to remedy it. But unfortunately, you know, even with the guidance that Jack's talking about, we have a model bylaw that says you must adopt the, the recommendation. If you want, the state's website says you must adopt, you know, all their recommendations as written. There's a guidance document that came out on Mo- in March that countered, counteracts all that, that says, oh no, you can go larger. Just, just proceed with caution. So, I mean, that was the question we had of, oh, can we go larger? But this just came out. This is new. It's, it's different to what's on the state's website, even though it's still a state document. And that's when um council, you know, was talking to the Attorney General with, with me and Steve there. And no, you gotta adopt it exactly as is.
So their guidance was in opposition to their, even their than their model bylaw?
Yeah, and it's just like a law.
Talk with somebody else.
You didn't get the answer you wanted. Call back.
Call that, come to someone else.
And it may just be the way they, they phrased it. It was just that, yes, you can go larger, but just not through this process. Like, you know, it's, it's, they, they didn't have, it's two sentences long, so you, people read things and interpret things differently, so that's, that's the hard part about this. And without there being case law, it's very difficult, and we're all going through our first rounds of zoning language. Very difficult to know what the AG is going to accept and not accept, and
So here's a question, just running this, floating this idea. What if we follow the guidance? Even though, you know, through conversations, we think it might not work. They get it, and then they talk about it, you know, we, could you, I don't know if you can, when you provide the proposed bylaw, if you can add some kind of con- contextual writing with it to say, this is what we're hearing from our people, this is what we want, it broadens it. Worst-case scenario, they shoot it down. It gets, say it gets passed at town meeting. AG's office shoots it down, and we're still gonna be at the nine hundred anyways, so what's really the harm?
It's a lot of wasted effort on our end.
Well, you're just changing it.
Going to go forward.
You're just changing a number. It's from nine hundred to, you know, twelve hundred.
But we know it's going to fail. So it's, it's why go through an effort that we know will fail.
Because I don't know if you, if there's gonna be changes. I don't know if
There is, there won't be before town meeting, so like this will all go through so many cycles that will fail. I mean, that, that's not gonna pass.
Through AG?
Absolutely not. I mean, we, we, we got that from her specifically, that you have got to adopt it. So, I mean, to me, that's just counterproductive to do anything that, I mean, it's, it's there'd be, to me, there's no point putting forward a zoning article at that point. Yeah.
So what would be the worst-case scenario if we just kept it at the nine hundred for now? You know, kind of see how the AG's office goes through the process. Maybe they'll hear enough feedback from other towns that they decide to make the nine hundred habitable. I mean, I feel bad for this gentleman, but he's one person out of twenty thousand. You know, our job is to plan the town, you know, and um he's in a situation, but so are we, because the state has put us in this situation. I mean, I kind of feel like just leave it at the nine hundred for now, pass it that way, and then I mean, I kind of feel like, just leave it at the nine hundred for now, pass it that way and then see what happens in the future. Maybe they will, you know, raise the square footage, make amendments to it and then, you know, you could bring it to special town meeting in the fall, right?
And in the summer, we'll see how much use gets from it, you know, it passes. Because once it goes through AG, when can, I mean, people can start using it.
We've already started using it, so February second was our date that we had to enact locally. So, any that comes in for ADUs now is on that criteria from the state.
Have you received any applications?
Yeah, I had two before me today.
And they're building-
They're building separate ADUs.
As the right is.
Yes, currently to this size, yeah.
What size lots are those ones and where are they?
Both are on Gully Lane, large lots.
So, there clearly then are some people that are comfortable enough with that size that they're doing it.
So, conceivably, if we did, you know, and these are the things that I think would be really beneficial for conversations to follow. So, say you take that, then we'll have some examples, right? We'll say, who's using it? Well, let's imagine what, whatever bylaw we draft for this XL, how it might parlay into the people who have already utilized the byright. So, now we have some like real kind of fact patterns to play with and see. And, and you know what it might look like on Gully and, you know, is there a traffic issue? And, you know, all that kind of thing and how that might impact. And it could help us frame the conditions in our XL a little bit more tailored to some real-world fact patterns. Now, I'm just sitting here thinking, they have to make it, say we go with that and we just make it the nine hundred for now, what about add-ons to the same structure to make it the twelve hundred or the fourteen hundred or whatever they want? I mean, it's, you know, it's not-
We're trying to do.
It's not preferable, but what about if they do add-ons when it changes?
I mean, you could do that. So, if we were able to pass another bylaw that made it larger, I mean, you could make a larger living space. I mean, obviously, when you're constructing, it's best to do it all at once. It's going to be the most efficient and cost-effective method. But you would potentially be able to add on in addition to the ADU if you were able to increase the space.
So, you're saying that you, once the byright ADU is built, they could then come before us as everything's drafted?
If we did another bylaw, say we made another bylaw for a larger unit, you could potentially change the class and then add an addition to it.
Oh, so, but then they would get another byright, the byright that they've received would then fade away because they would have, so they would essentially get another byright?
I do think that no, whatever way you go forward and if you're doing another unit, you're always going to have the two units.
You're going to have two units.
I don't think there's any way you can regulate around that unless they change the requirements of it being byright. I think you're always going to, because we cannot regulate the protected use one.
I mean, and I'm just thinking out loud, but would it be, what do you, your thoughts are maybe as a planning board? If we all agreed that we would love to have this be at a larger size to write to the Attorney General and just say, as a planning board for the town, this is what we're feeling, this is where we feel hamstrung, this is what we would like to do to build on this. And we would really like you to consider.
I can draft that letter on your behalf and circulate it at your next meeting and-
And then maybe-
Are you getting any feedback from other towns if they're considering?
Everyone's having a hard time grappling with it. There are, there are a bunch of towns that are kind of following what we're doing. There's a cohort of towns that are adding an extra large ADU and we're okay with having two on each lot. And then, there's other towns that are just, you know, we're going to create this the way we want to create it and see what happens.
Oh, really? Which towns are those?
Well, there was a couple of things, one of East Towns one. Yeah, there was just some discretionary approvals, like findings from their zoning board about non-conformities that, you know, I don't think that that would, I don't know that that would go through. And I don't know that that's their intent, that they're like, oh, let's just see if this passes. But obviously, it's a good idea because they just want that extra level of review for their community. But it is, it does say no discretionary approvals or special permits. So, I don't know that that would pass.
And if a special permit, I'm just kind of grappling with, is that deemed, well, I guess, yeah, it would be discretionary to an extent, right? Yeah.
I mean, maybe if all of the town planners are writing to the AG and saying, this is what we're hearing from my residents.
This is what happens, I lean at the Zoom meetings, you should see, we have some pretty feisty planners of the state. So, they, yeah, they had to turn off the chat on one of the sessions, it got pretty intense, yeah. A lot of people are very, very upset with how this came about. And it feels like, we're so used to Massachusetts of grass up and local level regulations and not so much the state coming down and burdening us with theirs. Especially when the intent is to be something good, we, I wish it wasn't as restrictive as it is.
So, right now, if I, I have a, if I want to put two small ADUs on, the second one I would have to get by special permit, but I still could put two on.
Not currently, no. So, currently, right now, like our current ADU bylaw states, the one that we can't use anymore, it's one per lot.
The one the state's requiring.
The state's one is one per lot.
Okay, it is one per lot.
We have the option to add a second by special permit if we wished.
But that's not required by the state?
It's not required, no.
I'm kind of more in favor of proceeding cautiously myself, I don't know how anybody else feels, but because it's so fluid. I think that, you know, there could be pressure on them to change it down the road. And then, I mean, there'd be those people that are kind of stuck in between where, you know, they were forced to build the nine hundred, but then at least if the byright goes up to twelve hundred, fourteen hundred, then they could add on if they wanted to at that point.
So, you want to take a poll? Do you want to add anything, questions? Well, you know, honestly, the last time we voted, I was kind of on the fence on this because I always like to give the people of town more options than less options. And I guess practically speaking, I didn't see that there'd be a huge infusion of people who'd want to build three things on their property, have three dwellings on their property. So, you know, if there would be an option and it wouldn't be too onerous to put that in as a separate warrant item, I could go for that.
Just another thought, if we wanted to do the extra large ADU, you could limit how many permits a year. So, our old ADU bylaw stated twenty-four permits in a year. So, we controlled the rate of development.
So, we can save five, could we literally save like five for the year?
Yep, it'd be up to you to, you could limit how many permits are approved in a year for an extra large ADU.
You'd certainly limit the problem.
So, it's just the first five in the door? It's usually, yeah, your first, your first however many. I mean, five is quite a low number, I would go maybe a little higher if you're going to do it, but I mean, that's just another, another option, we've done that in the past to limit rapid growth of development so we could see how things play out. Obviously, we can't do that with the byright one, but we could if we were to adoption extra large.
I sort of look at this from both sides, I think. I mean, I have children that are living on Cape and needing places to live. Then I also come from a private equity background. And so, I look at this from someone that is looking to make money, from a money-making perspective. I mean, just in my little neighborhood in the village, there are a lot of homes that have been purchased and they're now rentals.
It seems like the consensus is to table it and to bring it back up this summer. See, I'm guessing from three in that direction then.
That's my position.
So, then, the only one item that I would need you guys to vote on at a public hearing would be the change to the definition of gross floor area. So, I don't know if you will be able to let me know your availability now, either like a four-thirty on either the twenty-second or twenty-third?
I can do the twenty-second. And I can do, I have to be at Plymouth at five o'clock on the twenty-third, so I have time before that if you go. So, do we not have a meeting on the fifteenth, Lee Ann?
We do, but I have to advertise for two consecutive weeks and it has to be a certain period of days that the advertisement ends before we hold a hearing. So, fortunately, that was the first available date.
Yeah, twenty-second's good for me.
I can do the twenty-second.
And four-thirty's good?
Yep.
Maybe. The twenty-third would be better, but I could, I might, I'd have to have a hard stop at like five-thirty.
I could do the twenty-third, too.
And would you prefer to meet in person or remotely?
That doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to me either.
Is anybody available on the twenty-third?
I am, if we can be done by four-thirty.
Okay.
We could do four o'clock on the twenty-third if that works better.
Again, if it's not going to be more than an hour, I can do Tuesday at four-thirty.
I can't imagine it'd be more than twenty minutes. It's such a narrow definition, I mean, there's really not too much conversation that we could have about it.
If it works, then four-thirty on the twenty-second works.
So, that's all for your, okay, because that's a quorum. Okay, so then we can ask.
Maybe here.
Yeah, if you want to do it here, we can do it here or-
Or to the town hall. Because it's closed.
Well, it's easier for purposes of recording for SCTV to be in a meeting room that's already set up. Or via Zoom, whichever is easier.
This is for the definition of-
Gross floor area.
Gross floor area, thank you. So, I think we've settled that item. Next, there is request for comment. Number twenty-four dash fifteen Village Green, seventy-six Route one thirty and fifty-five Pimlico Pond Road Comprehensive Permit, NSG Village Green dash one LLC. There was a memo that came over from Christopher Nevin, this is the chair of the zoning board from the comp permit, to attach the request for the comprehensive permit. If you would like your comments to be reviewed by the Board of Appeals, kindly submit them no later than Wednesday, April third. Alternatively, they will be collected and distributed the night of the meeting. There's a public hearing scheduled for April eighth.
So, this project has been before the zoning board since July. We have had multiple hearings on it. We're getting close to the last few months of the project prior to the close of the public hearing. There's still quite a few bits that need to be discussed. We haven't finalized traffic with the applicant, solar array, its capacity, its design, some of the placemaking of the area, the amenities, the landscaping. They have consulted with a landscape architect to kind of go through and make this a little bit more of a community space for those that live there. The zoning board's still discussing building design with them. So, we're still going through the process, but we're definitely getting closer to the end than we would have been. And I wanted to make sure the board had an additional opportunity to comment. It also went out to all staff. We have hired quite the review team for this project. We have Judy Barrett from Barrett Consulting, which is, she's a renowned planner in Massachusetts, helping us through the project. We have Amy Cressel from Town Council. And then we also have a peer review consultant from an engineering firm, Tetra Tech, that has been looking at all site design, stormwater and engineering and traffic for the proposed project. So, as he's kind of finishing his review and those last few items on his end are closing, I wanted to bring back in the local knowledge and experts in our fields to be able to discuss the project and any additional comments we would have. So, the planning board talked about this twice. The first comment was that they were going to wait to hear a little bit more about the project. The second comment went forward and kind of addressed affordable housing needs, that it wasn't necessarily consistent with our housing production plan. We talked about the solar capacity, we talked about the lack of wastewater information, and we talked about traffic. So, I didn't know if you would like to make any additional comments or if you would like to think about it. And you could make comments at the next meeting also, I know it's getting quite late into the night now, but whichever you'd prefer.
There was an item on here about an issue with site distances being over other people's property. That was kind of interesting, how they would rectify that from like a traffic perspective.
There's quite a bit of traffic engineering they still have to provide comment on, that we've noted that has been lacking. So, we're still kind of going through that process of seeking information. We've definitely got closure on some of the items, wastewater, we've got closure on. We understand how the project will be permitted through the State Department of Environmental Protection. It's a pretty intense process, the permitting can take several years. And that they would be required to do that, a groundwater discharge permit, and show DEP that they wouldn't be adding any additional nitrates to the watershed in that area as we do have our inter municipalities agreement with Mashpee.
Are they doing an innovative alternative system that they had proposed to us?
No, they would need to do a full wastewater treatment facility.
A full wastewater treatment facility. Yeah, and it does say here they have a traffic engineer working on those.
And they do, yeah.
And were they still, because I'm sure this has been through many iterations, were they still building that battery energy storage system as part of the solar?
Yes, they haven't discussed it too much. We're anticipating getting, we never got calculations for capacity for what they would need for the the actual buildings themselves versus, you know, how much that they were going to be generating on-site and then the battery backups. They let us know that they would submit those calculations to us. They may have just done so in the current, so we would have to check that out. I haven't had time yet to look since they've submitted their new information to see if it's in there. But the Board of Appeals was really pushing to see a huge reduction in the ground mounted canopy and to see the capacity that would be generated on-site and that, you know, it's accessory to those structures and that could we utilize parking canopies over already paved areas and also rooftop? Would that be able to accommodate the load that they would need for that? So, that's kind of some of the discussion that they're still moving back and forth with.
On the plan, it says that it's like over seventeen acres, the array? So, has the size has been reduced or is that the reduced size?
No, so that's the original size that they went forward with. We have not seen a plan that reduces that size, they have talked about reducing that size, but by knowledge to date, they haven't submitted anything that shows that reduction.
And do they still have it at the four-point-one megawatts?
Yes, which they said that they would give forward a plan before the next meeting that showed a reduction and that had those calculations as to that they're only doing the energy required for that use. And they did get rid of the agricultural building and that we had questions on as to what intended use for that building. They are also asking for a waiver of parking requirements. Currently, it's two spaces per unit. They're hoping to down to one-point-five spaces per unit so they can have more green space. But it's consistent with Cape Cod Commission guidance for housing units that we don't necessarily, we're overparking. The board may ask for a condition where we have offset parking on a separate section of land that they own that's reserved. It can be green space until they potentially might need it for parking. We want to make sure that there's overflow in the time. If the capacity gets to the amount that everyone, everyone has a car, that we potentially would have overflow parking.
That makes sense, yeah.
And the plans that they submitted for the architecture of the buildings? When I was looking at our bylaws, what is our height restriction?
Our height restriction is thirty-five feet. You can waive a height restriction under a comprehensive permit.
Okay.
So, you can ask for a waiver from any local zoning regulations.
So, that's what they've done to get to that four stories is ask for a waiver of that height restriction.
I just did a calculation of the, if they kept the solar array at the seventeen acres, it would come out to something crazy like twenty-five hundred trees they're going to cut down. We just spent so much time talking tonight about the trees. And they would be cutting down like on average like twenty-five hundred trees to make that solar array.
The only problem is, is that they could cut them down regardless, we don't really have control.
Yeah.
You know, that's, but I mean, you're right, we spent like so much time on the seventeen trees. It's a shame to think that that would be, maybe they wouldn't be incentivized to cut as many.
Yeah.
If they limited the size of the solar array, yeah.
Or if they're going to place them on the parking canopies or whatever, maybe then, you know, they don't have to do quite as many, but-
We're trying to reduce as much clear cutting as possible.
Right.
But it's a good segue if the board ever wants to entertain a clear cutting bylaw, I mean, it's something we could always look at.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Do others?
Yes.
Can we consider it and just get, familiarize ourselves with it?
So, we can send some model bylaws around and see if you would want to pick it up this summer and look at keeping more canopy coverage in town.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
I'm good, I'm still very concerned about the traffic there, but I, I see that that's still an open issue, so.
Yeah, there definitely still is quite a few open issues that we're discussing. Um, and maybe it's not appropriate at this point to give one until you see kind of more final site designs. But I just wanted to provide you the opportunity to, um, to see it again and to see kind of the progress we've made with it. And, um, if you had anything glaring that you want to comment right now or if you want to put it on the next agenda, I can also do that, um, for your next meeting this month.
I'm still concerned with the size of this solar array and it being.
Yeah, me too.
Um, private equity owned, which they're going to be selling it in five years, five to seven years. Um, and it's a business, it's a revenue generating business. Um, especially with that best system to be pushing it back on onto the grid. And, yeah, I know that we're, our hands are kind of tied because they've packaged it with the housing project.
Um, so ultimately, I mean, we can condition as, um, that they can only create the capacity that is required for the housing development. We can condition that the housing comes before the solar, so they're not just doing a solar field and, and leaving it dormant. Um, and then ultimately, Mass Housing, which is the financing organi- um, agency for the state, they look at it to see how this interacts forty B, you're limited to a certain amount of profit. So you can't generate profit, it's, it's illegal. It goes back to the town for affordable housing purposes if extra profit is generated.
Yeah. What if the solar arrays were large enough? If there were power to be sold, that it would go back, because it is an affordable housing complex, it would go back into maybe like a working capital fund or some kind of association contribution for common areas, something like that. So it might not go just for powering necessarily, but the money, revenue generated from maybe selling any solar. Because you kind of want to have a, I think, you know, from a private equity standpoint, something that's attractive to maybe, you know, people to invest in something. And if you have, and it, it kind of, if people have more money in their pocket to not pay dues and it's being generated by this, it's just, it's going to look better. People are probably, you know, I just feel like there's just more, I don't know, kind of investment personally and with just the ownership of it, if they could make it larger.
I mean, honestly, that's not a question I can answer. I would, I would have to ask the state, um, and what they look at. I just know that typically, if you make profit higher than what you're supposed to for a forty B, for affordable housing, um, it usually goes to some type of affordable housing project, um, or fund.
Weren't they separated out as two separate components? Though it seemed to me that that was easily divested, that solar portion. That's why they were hesitant to start putting things on roofs of buildings that they, they can't then sell.
Yeah, we've been trying to make it pretty clear through the process that the only way that this is, the solar would be allowed via forty B is that it is sized at its ancillary accessory to the housing. The housing is the number one project and that has to just support the housing. If they can't make money off it, otherwise it's its own separate process. And they would have to come before you for a ground mounted solar permit and trigger Cape Cod Commission, um, DRI review.
So profit, it, it, it doesn't matter who, who's benefiting from the profit. So if it was the complex itself, like I'm wondering if profit was generated and then put back into the complex, maybe to lower dues or something like that.
Something the state goes through. It's, it's nothing we have local control over. I'm not sure whether or not that's allowed. I'm, I don't get involved in, in the financing aspect for forty Bs.
I'm just wondering from an accessory standpoint, from the size of the solar array and considering how much power it can generate, if, if it powered more than what was being, you know, anticipated to generate use-wise by the inhabitants of the complex, if that could be allowed as an accessory as so long as, as the, the money went back into the complex, I think.
No, I, I, I hundred percent understand what you're saying, but, um, we can't condition financing. It's, it's a state, it's on the state regulations.
No, I get that. I'm just wondering from the amount, if we're trying to condition the amount of solar.
Yeah, but we can't make conditions regarding how that profit is being used. That's not our review. So all of the, the profit goes, yeah, sorry, maybe I wasn't saying it right.
That's late.
Yeah. It just all comes down through the state. So they, they adjudicate all of that at their level. They don't have to share financing with us or, or what's happening with it. Um, so, so that's, that's all I'm trying to, yeah.
Thank you. I mean, I think all of our comments have been brought forward. Thank you for bringing us up to date on it. Does anybody want to bring anything forward at this time?
I don't. Um, I think we would just be reiterating the comments that we've already brought forward and hopefully they're still fresh in their minds.
All right, so no comments, good time, thank you, Leanne.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other matters not reasonably anticipated? All right, take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks.